February 25th meeting of the East Penn School District Board of School Directors will hereby come to order. Please rise and join me in the collective.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
The first item I have on the agenda tonight is a request to address the board. I'll remind people that they have three minutes. And the first person I have is Susan Kuhnman from McCounchy speaking about Willow Lane Transportation.
Hi, good evening. As Mr. Ballard said, my name is Susan Kuhnman and I'm here to share my concerns about Willow Lane. On the agenda this evening, I see that there's a motion to approve the onsite improvements to be made to the Willow Lane campus. However, I urge the members of the board, please, before you vote yea or nay, consider these unanswered questions. What are the specific changes that are being made to the Willow Lane campus? Yes, some of the changes were mentioned as part of the walkability study presented to parents on November 27th. But why haven't we seen a detailed blueprint of the specific changes? Even tonight's agenda includes a to-do list of construction tasks rather than a detailed site plan explaining what these tasks hope to accomplish. Why has there been no opportunity for public review and comment on the specific onsite improvements? The closest we've come to any sort of public review was the district's scheduled presentation at Lower McCounchy Township's Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on February 14th. Unfortunately, the district was a no-show. Apparently, they asked to be pulled from the agenda because their engineer was not available. Was there no one else who could take his or her place? Where is the sense of urgency? We're against the clock. Now we have to wait until the next Planning and Zoning meeting on March 14th to hear the details about East Penn's plan. If East Penn is committed to working with Lower McCounchy Township, how can the administration seek approval for an onsite improvement plan that doesn't take any of Lower McCounchy's comments or concerns into account? Again, we have to wait until March 14th. Similarly, how can the administration seek board approval for onsite changes without seeking any input or feedback from parents? Yes, in a new survey opened today, parents were asked to give their name and say if they would be willing to volunteer on Dr. Moeller's parent committee. But when will that committee convene? The survey closes March 4th and it will take time to select the committee, so no review of the blueprint could take place before mid to late March at the earliest. How can a district make infrastructure changes without first considering the process by which students will be dropped off and picked up from school? Shouldn't we be doing this the other way around? Shouldn't we nail down the actual manner in which parents drive into the school campus, park their cars, and drop off or pick up their children, and then build an infrastructure that supports that process? Don't we need to know some real numbers about who will really be walking, who will be driven, and who will be taking the bus?
Ms. Kuhnman, could you wrap that up, please?
Yes, I will. As board members, it's up to you to ensure that the money in our district is well-spent. I'm concerned that proposed onsite changes aren't necessarily improvements but a $90,000 Band-Aid. It's time for the district to anticipate problems rather than react to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuhnman. The next person I have requesting to speak is Mr. Leel LaRusa of McCounchy speaking about Willow Lane Transportation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again. I've been here a few times now. I think I'll be brief tonight. The first thing I want to do is say thank you. I feel like I'm starting to get a little bit of feedback and some response from the board as to the concerns we've had. While that's not complete, I understand that things take time. I try to be reasonable and patient with that. And the second is I'll draw your attention to an item that I think towards the end of the agenda tonight, which is a motion about creating the committee to include parents. I'll leave it to your judgment whether that motion specifically is the best representation of how to proceed from that in your body. But the spirit in which the motion is really important, I think that you consistently hear from parents about wanting to have their input, their concerns voiced in a dialogue fashion as opposed to us coming up and just making statements. I think that type of committee would allow for that back-and-forth productive dialogue and might actually alleviate some of the stress you might feel having the consistent presentations at this meeting tonight. So, consider that, please, for this evening's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I have is Jonathan Berger of McCounchy speaking on Willow Lane Busing.
Good evening. My name's Jonathan Berger and I've been here several times as you probably know. Last Thursday, I attended the Lower McCounchy Township Board of Commissioners meeting and I must say that that was a good experience. It was actually a complete 180 from the experiences I've had here at the school board. It was refreshing to have interactive dialogue with these political leaders. The meeting was efficient and effective. It was done about an hour and a half. There was no infighting. There were no leaders of the board bullying other members or shouting in a threatening or condescending tone at concerned parents. As a public servant, you should be ashamed of yourself if this description fits you. The last meeting, we were presented with what was called the first and most comprehensive transportation study for the district in 18 years. It is comprehensive, so kudos on that. I appreciate the man-hours and effort, I truly do. If it was the first, then shame on you. That's a problem. So, I've read through the study and an old saying comes to mind: "There are lies, there are damn lies, and there are statistics." If you had listened to the past few meetings and several last year, you would think that the Willow Lane parents were asking for something extraordinary. That's the furthest thing from the truth. In the study itself, on page 6, Table 1, it shows that out of the 10 schools in the district, six of those schools have a 90% or greater number of students riding buses to and from school. Willow Lane is at 92.2%, which is less than the other five schools in that group of six, three of which are elementary schools. Currently, 50% of schools in the district have a higher busing percentage than Willow Lane. I know they're extenuating circumstances, but I believe Willow Lane has those as well, being that there are no safety measures in place. On page 7, Table 3, it shows that in the .75 to 1.5 mile distance between the other six elementary schools, only 41 students are considered walkers. So tell me, how would it be fair to send 341 Willow Lane students to the streets that fall in the same walking range where only 41 out of all the other six schools currently walk in that range? As Dr. Seidenberger said last meeting, these handful of children can be bused at no additional cost. So the decision here should be a no-brainer. Observe that the safety measures are put in place and vote for option 2 for Willow Lane as outlined in page 23. That would extend busing to all students in the district that live within a .75 to 1.5 mile range from their respective schools. The district would save $54,000 in that process. If you vote for option 1, the 1.5 mile range, saving an additional $48,000, that is a straight-up money grab with no consideration for children's safety and an injustice for the students at Willow Lane. The Leeatt Valley has long been underlined by the acronym ABE for Allentown, Bethlehem, and Easton. A few years back, Lower McCounchy far surpassed the population of Easton, is a major suburb of Allentown, and it's time to open up our eyes to this. In fact, at the township meeting on last Thursday, the Board of Commissioners, they showed multiple slides of heroin, cocaine, tons of drug busts that have been done by the local state police. Forty percent of their area is in Lower McCounchy's.
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you so much.
The next person I have wishing to address the board is Mr. Todd Solomon of McCounchy speaking about Willow Lane Busing.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to be brief. I just wanted to echo what Jonathan Berger was just saying about the, please reconsider having children walk up to 1.5 miles because of the many safety issues that we brought up previously, as well as since this is all about being fair, having 341 students walk compared to 40 or 41 from all the other schools. It's unfairly balanced in putting that unfairness more heavily on Willow Lane students. Not to mention that we're only looking at placing safety guards at two major intersections, ignoring all the other intersections that students get up to walk if they're coming from 1.5 miles away. Unless there's money there, that we're hiring additional safety guards, I don't see how that could be safe. And as was mentioned before, there's many issues that need to be considered. So, thank you for listening to us and considering all these and, uh, thank you, guys.
Thank you. The last person requesting to address the board this evening is Mr. Garrett Rhodes of West Coast Hill speaking about electronics recycling event.
Yes, as many people in our community may not already be aware, as of January 2013, it became illegal to throw out anything in the trash that has a circuit board in it. In response to that, as the founder of the Eastern Pennsylvania Business Owners Network here in this area, we decided to put together an electronics recycling event for the community. We will be sponsoring and bringing out the responsible recycling services of Coostown to have the event at the Willow Lane Elementary School parking lot on Saturday, March 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This event will be free to all citizens to come and recycle any electronics they might have. The event will benefit the East Penn School District's Angel Network, so we're very happy to be able to help them raise some money. We'll be asking for freewill donations from the community in that regard. And along with that, I would like to thank Dr. Moeller, Willow Lane Elementary School, for volunteering the use of the parking lot, and also Dr. Seidenberger and his staff in the business office, who helped us get around a few concessions that we needed to talk about in order to put out the event. So I just wanted to thank the administration and the school for giving us the opportunity to serve the community with a great initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the requests I have to address the board this evening. We'll move on to item number 3, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
Come on.
Second. Are there any additions, corrections, or comments to the minutes? Mr. Botter?
Um, just, uh, talking about my fifth report, um, I said that the, uh, the third meeting was scheduled, wasn't scheduled, I meant to say it wasn't, hadn't occurred yet. I don't recall that. If you said the wrong way, I'd like to correct the record and say it was scheduled and it hasn't occurred yet and it still hasn't occurred.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Botter. Ms. Donches?
Yes, at the end, when I was talking about the Insurance Advisory Council, I would like the record changed to indicate that I said that it appears that insurance is purchased in both the statement and in the resolution.
Any other comments? The makers of the motion approve the friendly amendment to do with comments? Okay, all those in favor of the approving minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, it gives me great pleasure to announce that we have our SGA representatives here tonight and they're going to give us their report. We have Adam Keita and Will Giore.
Jerome.
Jerome?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Bad eyes.
I'm wearing my glasses.
Why don't you gentlemen go ahead?
Um, thank you. First, we would like to say, we would like to congratulate the 2012-2013 Duck Ds into National Honor Society. It actually makes a real nice improvement to see that there are that many students that are willing to put forward the work into their academic studies, not just let alone here, and also willing to outstretch into our community as well.
Um, recently, SGA spearheaded an event that we actually established last year. Mr. Amas, you may have seen or heard of Mr. Parkin, and basically it's a male beauty pageant. It's pretty good for laughs. It's hilarious, actually. Twelve contestants, close to 400 people in attendance, and we picked judges from the local community to kind of pick the winner, and it was really successful once again. So it's a great event. If you haven't seen it, come on, check it out next year.
Um, the Mayas Drama Department is also going to put on a production of Wiggly Wanda musical. It'll be done April 10th through 12th, and on the 13th, there will be two shows, one at 2:00 p.m. and one at 7:00. Children are $10 and adults will be 12 and...
Uh, you can reserve tickets online through the school's website. Um, next up, we have the MS High School Track Team is hosting a Shave for the Brave event. If you haven't heard of that. Basically, you can sign up to have your head shaved, have all your hair shaved off, and you raise money for a child with cancer. It's a great event. Patient increases every year exponentially. It's great to see. Um, each year, we have a few girls that are brave and willing to shave off their golden locks to support cancer, so it's great to see. The event's going to happen during track season, so, uh, late March.
Um, and to go along with that, their first year goal was only to be like $5,000. This is back in 2010 and they raised up to $24,566. And then just last, in 2011, they raised up to $39,920. So, in just a previous amount of one year, it shows how much that people are willing to just donate and willing to help those with cancer. I myself might consider doing it this year due to family, uh, due to my father's cancer treatment as he has. It's also, it's just good to see everyone just actually participate in this field.
Uh, next up, we are experimenting with a new activity at the MS High School. When Valentine's Day rolled around, we wanted to do some sort of matchmaker activity and I talked to two of my cousins and they said in high school, they had done this activity and they ended up getting married, so I thought, why not give it a try? You can find this website, found this website too. That is relatively inexpensive, costs about 8.9 cents per survey. And each student will fill out a survey and then we send the results back to this company and they send result sheets back to us. And basically, the students can purchase the results for a dollar and find their 16 badges within the grid and the 16 school wives, as well as most compatible friends and least compatible friends. So it should be cool.
Also, back in, back in November when we had Hurricane Sandy, we wanted to say thank you to all the students and faculty members that took a bus trip up to Staten Island just to help out with the relief effort. And also to go along with that, one of the teachers here, Mr. McHansell, the Ashrami teacher, had significant damage to his house from that storm and from the October snowstorm that we had. We had flooding in his basement and like roof damage and siding. Um, and what was really neat was he applied to get the HGTV, sorry, HGTV show, catastrophe bank, which is where they come out and rebuild your house for, under certain circumstances. And it was really neat because they came into the high school and filmed his like reaction to what happened. But what was also neat was due to some of the students who were willing to pursue into like TV and like advertisement and radio, these students actually got to have the chance to look at the equipment and like how cameras, their cameras were compared to just like a normal video camera we would all take to like the beach or like to film like children and stuff like that. So, it really just is nice just to see it.
Um, coming up, I'm not quite sure when these trips will be taken, but students who are in Spanish 4 or 5 in Spanish honors, have the opportunity to go to Spain just every year, as well as the kids who take Latin. There will be a trip to Italy and Greece coming up. There's a lot of, only a lot of meetings for those and kind of learning about how this is going to work out. That's everything. All I've got.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for our student government representatives? Ms. Donches?
I don't have a question, but I would like to comment that I sat as a single in the middle of many high school children, or high school scudids, for the Mr. Amas contest, and I'm just glad I went. It was very enlightening and very exciting and fun.
Well, we all know Mr. Amas is much more handsome than Mr. Parkin. Um, I want to thank you for your report. We're always proud of our students and your participation on the board and we appreciate the report. And thank you very much, and if you'd like to sneak out right now before the long-winded rest of the discussion goes, that's fine with us. But thank you very much for your report. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Willow Lane Site Improvements, and can we have a motion, please?
Come on.
Second. If you moved and seconded, we'll now have Dr. Seidenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Tonight, we have Paul Suizak, our engineer for Liberty Engineering Company, who designed these recommended changes. And I just want to preface our comments by reminding the board and the public of some very important information. Number one, way back when, and I think it was obvious when I sent the board a letter recommending that we continue with transportation this year, we did give you an eye, an inkling at that point that we were going to recommend changes to the Willow Lane footprint. Also, in the walkability study, you will find references to Mr. Suizak's plans. And I also want to show the board, and I know I went back and looked at the board minutes, both in December and January, I did give you an update, and told the board consistently that we have been meeting all along with Lower McCounchy Township, a committee of their representatives, including their town engineer, to go over our plans. So, this is not springing anything on anyone. We've been engaged in this plan for the better part of five or six months. Sometimes I know to the public it may sound arduous, but we have two different legislative bodies working on this issue. And when you have a government entity, I respect what the township rules and regulations, they have, and I know from Bruce that they respect our processes, our laws. Tonight, our goal is to share this information with you. We've talked about it enough. I want to remind the board that this is the administration's recommendation to do this. And a lot of people noted that we found some information out. We took our time with transportation studies, and one of the things that we came to the conclusion was that we did nothing. We still have a traffic problem at Willow Lane, but I think I said that two weeks ago. And one of the things that we're trying to do in this process is become a good neighbor with the township. Almost from day one, we've had discussions with the township about emergency vehicles. What would happen on a particular day if we had cars lined up and stuck in traffic coming into main entrance of Willow Lane? So we recognized, and I don't think anyone was at fault, that was just an unintended outcome of that school's design. And we're still not finger pointing, and we're not finger pointing. But this is an opportunity for us to change the route, and this is well thought out. We've said it many times, but I'm going to let Paul go through all the logistics and then you can certainly ask Paul questions. But again, I want to emphasize that we have gone over this plan twice with Lower McCounchy Township. And I think, uh, Mr. Lancy, Dr. Mirabel, Mrs. Campbell, and I think each of those few times, that township basically had very few if any comments and liked our particular recommendations to solve this problem. So I feel confident in telling you that tonight. So, Paul, why don't we follow up and take us through the recommended changes? And thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
Just to give you a little refresher on the site that you're looking at, your elementary school sits in this. That's the firehouse. Is the microphone in front of you, Mr. Shore? School building sits here, front entrance, bus drop-off in the gym area. That's the fire station. Sauerkraut Lane, Willow Lane, Mill Creek Road. This site was designed with two main access points, one off the Sauerkraut and one off of Mill. And it creates a circular motion around this school. One of the, one of the issues that we always deal with in these schools is to separate buses from cars. So the way it currently operates is cars come into main, what I'll call the Sauerkraut Lane main entrance, and they come in through this drop-off lane, and then they circulate back out and around. And then the buses will come in the back. They come in and then we have the ability to stack those buses. Typically, you see pretty much everyone at your school is the way we stack buses. What we found as a result of all the studies was you're getting a large increase in the amount of cars coming to this site. And what happens is those cars are stacked up in this driveway and then they're actually bleeding out onto Sauerkraut. From the township's perspective, it is blocking, or at least it hinders, their operation of the firehouse in emergency because that's basically how those trucks would leave. What we're proposing is to simply reverse the pattern on this site between the cars and the buses. We want to bring the buses in from Sauerkraut and we want to have them drop off in here. We want to bring the cars in from Mill Creek and have them circulate back around. With respect to the buses, pretty much the site configuration, the way it works today is fine, except for some minor improvements we have to do. For instance, this was designed for cars, so in order to swing that bus back out and around, excuse me, we have to do a little bit of paving between where you'll see the end of the retaining wall and the detention pod. As you'll see if you're out there, the fencing for the detention pod. So what we determined is if we could put a little bit more paving in there, the buses easily make that turn and then continue. In keeping with the idea to segregate buses from cars, we're going to propose that you install gates in this location and over here. And that gate is similar to what's pictured up in the top corner. Simply, it's a bar, it's kind of a swinging arm gate. It only has to be open to close at very key points during the operation of the school, mainly drop-off and pickup. The rest of the time, swing the gates open, let the site function the way you would normally have it function. It also doesn't impede, the other thing we looked at with the school we originally designed it, is to try to accommodate the special event nights and create as much room on-site. Those gates won't impede, they just stay open and site flows will continue. When you look at the bus area, currently what happens is we stack buses in like this. And especially in the afternoon, what happens is all your buses are sitting there and then once they're all full, they peel off one by one and leave the site. What we're going to do is reverse the flow and bring all the cars in and we will simply stack them all the way along here. Um, there's additional signage that's put up along here that keeps the cars moving. Once the students are dropped off, they can come out of the same, however the principal would like to operate this, but in the same doorways that operate, students will be along the sidewalks. And you can even, there's existing walking paths in here, you can even have students get to the cars from all this direction. And this again is that gate area, we close that off, so during, during the whole student pickup and drop-off, I eliminate the conflict between the buses and cars. Another site improvement that we're suggesting you do as part of, once we're out in the site, we're going to clean a few things up. During the construction of this school, the walking path will put in. But on this site, because of the existing detention pod from one of the housing developments, there wasn't enough room to slide this walkway all over the one side. So if you go out there today, you're going to have this walkway come in and then cross and then continue. In the event that you decide to increase your walking, and what we're suggesting is we'll do some minor recreating, maybe a small retaining wall in here, and we're going to put that walk all on one side and eliminate it on this side. The other thing that does for you is technically, you're going to stack cars all in this driveway, all the way around. There will be a walking path at that point where every car would be parked so that the kids, the students, anybody walking to and from the school or getting to and from these cars has a safe place to walk where they're not in driveways where the cars are operating. The other thing we're going to do at the entrance is this will be signed as it's... The other thing we're going to do at the entrance is this will be signed as it's only bus traffic and emergency vehicle traffic are now being allowed to use this driveway. It'll be signed as such if we do not enter. So really, the main entrance for vehicular access will come off of Mill Creek. Those are the main, just go back. Those are the main improvements to the site.
And the estimates that we gave the board last week that are also on the board package, those are your estimates for completing the work?
Those are our estimates based on some fairly current numbers we have on the job schedule. There's not a lot of construction work to go on, there's some additional paving, there's quite a bit of signage and striping we want to do, and the gates, of course, but we're pretty comfortable about the, about the numbers that we're looking at.
For the board's information, we did this sometime this spring and started work immediately right after school. We don't think this worked last month and maybe a week or two.
No, it's pretty, again, it's not a lot of construction work to be done.
And again, anything you want to share with the board regarding our, our meetings with the township? As I said before, our plans were well received by the township, the law and the local board.
Yeah, I was at several of those meetings with Keystone Consulting Engineers and Township Engineers. They've, they've reviewed these pretty extensively, and really, they had virtually no comments for us to do other work on site. They're simply looking at how they're going to accommodate some of the offsite issues that they have to deal with. But they're, they're perfectly on board with this arrangement.
And again, now that you're here, maybe you can just talk about the differential. We control traffic and signage on the school site, but crosswalks and signage on the roads, those are issues that are handled by Lower McCunche Township.
Correct. The school district is responsible for your site. Now, keep in mind, you don't control, this is not your land over here. However, you had an agreement when you did this school that that driveway becomes yours to maintain. But anything offsite, and offsite includes that intersection, for instance, crosswalk sign, that's a township requirement, it's not a school requirement. And when we designed this school at the urging of the township, all of the, most of the developments in and around there are sidewalks, walking paths. The only walking paths we built were the ones on site. They were, they were requested, and they were built to connect to the township system. So even this one along Sauerkraut and this one up, they were already there before we got this school constructed.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Dr. Seidenberger or the engineer, Mr. Botter?
You talked about the Mill Creek entrance not having to cross the driveway twice, which I think is a good idea. How do they eventually get to the school though? If they don't cross the driveway at all, does that mean they go all the way around the parking lot to get to the school?
This school, using your network of sidewalks around the school, even the stuff at the school, that's, this slide doesn't show, but that walkway will come up to here, and they simply cross at a controlled crosswalk with stop signs. There's, on this site, and it's an option we're going to look at, there are drainage swales sitting in here as a result of what happens, the residential area back in here are a much higher elevation. So the water actually comes down to the site, it's a, with all the stormwater drainage we put on the site, but there's actually swales sitting in there. And they're up close to the driveway, and it's difficult to get another sidewalk in there. We're going to look at whether we can fit it in or not. And when you look at the estimate that I provided, there's actually a budget line item at the bottom of that. If we can get that side, if we can get that walkway in, we're going to do it. But obviously, you have budget concerns, and there are some things on site that may just not be feasible.
That's listed as the alternate.
That's an alternate. So if that's the case, but ultimately, you got to remember, no matter where I cross those, wherever I have this walkway, eventually you've got to cross this driveway. But it's still...
Go all the way around the outside and cross the gates?
It's a long block, yeah. It's still better to put in as much of this because obviously, when we break the car traffic, it's doing that movement.
You don't want to cross the lines.
I want, I want to have, you want the ability for the passengers to get out on the right side of that park.
And then the second question, you talked about the cars being stacked up. Are the kids only getting out when they're booted around and they're waiting in line? Or are their kids going all around, getting out all along this path that you said the cars are stacked up?
I, I'm not a party to how they're going to operate. My, my assumption is they're going to wait until they get somewhere in this parking lot I think, and it's similar to the way I believe the school's operating now, is that for the most part, once they start allowing the kids out, this line is moving, and kids are getting in the car, there's a constant movement. So my assumption is...
Just come in, please.
I'm sorry, it's just not fashionable.
The ability is there, and it is up to, we're going to leave it up to the administration how they want to operate the site once it's done.
I have a question for Dr. Seidenberger. This plan is similar to what I saw, basically what the board saw in August. Was that not released to the public?
It was in the walkability study, but it was basically, you can find just about everything. In fact, this plan is a little bit of enhancement, I would think, from what we originally planned in August, after having some more conversations, but I think you can find the basic parts in our walkability study.
What I have trouble with is I hear any of the people that are looking at this in detail say they had a team before, and I don't know if the documents haven't been repealed, or if, I certainly have seen the plan, the idea to change the route to bus and cars, switching them.
Well, and I think, I think we've talked about, and I know at least two different times, we've talked about, basically, there's a minor changes, we were going to reroute the cars, the cars are going to come into Mill Creek, buses were going to come into the main entrance, we're going to widen turnaround side, we're going to put signage in, we're going to put gates in, and that's, and maybe some striping, that's pretty much it. I mean, this is not a wholesale change. And again, I want to emphasize, that's one of the reasons why the township had very little concerns about this plan. It's kind of fundamental, and as Paul mentioned, we just sort of flipped the traffic around. And, you know, one of the things we talked about, and I'll just say it tonight, we did parent surveys, and, you know, when you look at the work we've done, we really reduced this, these issues to some drop off and pickup times and some supervision issues. And Dr. Moore is certainly one of the well qualified to work with a parent group on that. I mean, some of the answers I could give tonight, it's mainly it's coming from me. And I, he certainly would advocate Dr. Moore sitting down with some parents and explaining how drop offs are going to happen. I've been there enough times to see how it works in the morning. We've had somebody counting the cars. We think that you're going to have a wide area now on the gym side where the cars are coming in, we'll stack up more cars. We would anticipate, and again, I don't want to put words in Dr. Moore's mouth...
When you say stack up, you're saying cars waiting?
Yeah, cars waiting. We think there's going to be a better flow, and actually get, actually get more cars through the school site than what we have right now. And, and then certainly, I think in common sense, that we would ask parents, and again, just because we ask parents, doesn't mean they do it. I mean, I was a principal in 1981, and it had issues with parents not following instructions. I think most principals will tell you that every once in a while, you got to remind parents about safety issues. But nonetheless, I'm sure that Dr. Moore will work with his parents, give enough communication, enough announcements to say, hey, you're going to drop your students off on the gym side, and there'll be supervision waiting. We've talked about that, I'm sure Dr. Moore will be able to share with parents exactly how many parents or how many staff members will be out here, and what the flow of traffic would, how the kids will be released in the afternoon. I mean, we have kids going in the cars now, so this is not something entirely new. We're going to build on the experience that we have.
I have one more? Yep, couple more questions. Someone mentioned the actual bid of this project is going to be later in the year?
No, if the board approves, here's our, my answer. The immediate steps are this, if the board passes this resolution, going to let Mr. Foslin know tomorrow, so that he certainly can pass this on. We would be then appearing before, March 14th, before a small committee of township commissioners. We do not expect any difficulties at all. They have promised us that they will expedite this request, so we're not going to go through red tape. That was one of the first questions that we had way back in the fall. Was there a process? In fact, I called Mr. Fisher, and we asked Mr. Fisher, do we think there was going to be any prolonged red tape from the township? And I can honestly say, meaning we had in December, that was cleared up, the township said basically, no red tape. Basically, give us the plans, we gave them the plans, we talked about it, and I anticipate no problems whatsoever with the township approving this.
I wasn't really concerned about the township.
And then, the next thing we'll do is then tomorrow, ask Mr. Lancy and Mr. Suizak to start preparing the bid documents about the bid, and award a bid. Bid's around 60 days, so I would imagine we'll bid, we'll award this bid in April or May, and the work will start right after school.
That's sort of the timeline. I was wondering, obviously, we're going to have the work done in the summer. Would you work back to when we need to start the bids? What is the timeline, if there is?
I'll let Mr. Lancy respond.
Also, I work with Paul, and probably we could, again, this is not an extensive project. No, you have to, not a lot of engineering to this. We're going to add some paving, signage, striping. We had the plans when we first did it, we had to go out and do a little survey, so we can work out some of these grades a little bit. We do bid packages for you every year, we have your format down. We need to have a meeting with the township to make sure they're on board, because they're going to have to, after they do, they're, they're going, they're going to have a sort of planning committee meeting, instead of a full blown planning commission hearing, and then their board of commissioners have to take a vote to reapprove the site plan because it's an ever so slight modification from the original approval. But as that's all procedurally taking place behind the scenes, we produce a couple of drawings necessary for the bid documents to happen. So we're comfortable this will be bid and constructed in plenty of time.
Well, I guess where I'm going with it is if we're saying we're approving it now, is there any drawback to holding off on approving it? I, I think the improvements are necessary. I think there are kids that walk, there are parents that walk even without the chance of busing. I'm just wondering, how does that impact the schedule if we were to delay at one meeting? If people just say they haven't had a chance to look at the plan, a chance to weigh in? Is that an issue in this schedule?
My whole opinion, no, because the board would then approve this on March 11th, we're going to the township. I'd rather go to the township with the board approval than have a speculation. The worst thing we can do is go to a meeting and then ask a question, do you board approve this? Well, maybe have, well, maybe you got to come back when the board's approved. That's just as common sense. So if that's the board's pleasure, we wouldn't have a problem. I don't think it would hold us up. As I said before, this is, this work is so minor, that we, we bid it out, and certainly, this will be done by the end of June, early July, if it's later. I, I can't see it paying, you know, like full summer's worth of work.
I don't want to, maybe I'll be commenting on this, but if it doesn't impact the schedule if people are saying they have to find a way in on it, does anyone have a direct statement to say, "We're going to..."
Well, I do have a problem with cutting off comment before we...
I know, I don't want to do that, but I'm just offering that. I don't want to cut off comment.
Can I all go to the second round?
Yeah, I'll hear you.
Mr. Dotchens?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Did actually answer a number of the questions I had for myself as far as the gate separating the car and the bus traffic, the sign being down on Sauerkraut, right, when people could see it right away that that was only for buses, so thank you for that. I am interested in the checking process and the checkout process, so I guess those questions would be answered. Would this come out, this is out of 212-13 budget or 1301?
We're going to think it's out of capital reserve.
Okay.
I think I mentioned that, I think I, we can put that in our transportation study.
Will we be getting an update on the capital reserve?
Sure.
About a year old?
Absolutely. As part of budget process, we know yet.
Okay, so this doesn't have any impact on that then? We're not foregoing something else in order to do this?
No, absolutely not.
And what is the total parking capacity? Is it changing at all with this new parking count? Will we be incurring any extra costs or trying to expedite it, or trying to get it started at a certain amount of time?
No. Well, but the one thing is, this is a great time to go out and bids now. That's the only thing, that would be the only drawback. But again, we're talking about two weeks, but nonetheless.
We can't go out and bid until we got the township's formal approval?
Probably not, but, I mean, I wouldn't do that. I don't think that would be wise.
And then as far as the bump out for the bus turnaround, about how much is that? And does that affect the floodplain?
No, it's outside, it's well outside the floodplain. Floodplain is actually down below the pond area is where that floodplain is. That's a pretty, that's only a couple hundred square feet of paving, it's pretty minor due to the size of the site.
So as far as the, did it bump out, what is that, like 20 feet?
I think I took it out, it's about 18 to 20 feet.
Mr. Dotchens, are you done?
I think that's it for now, thank you. Yep, I, yeah, thank you, Mrs. Suizak. You've answered my questions. I just wanted to comment about concerns that have been expressed about administering students getting, students getting in and out of cars. As a parent, I'm afraid it is hard, we were among the parents who delivered our children to school, even though that they could have busing. My husband took it to be a badge of pride. So they were delivered to Shoemaker Elementary, and, for many years, and everything was administered beautifully, there was staff there to make sure that the children got out into the building safely and back into the car safely. And I know that Dr. Lawyer works beautifully with the parents of our school, and I have every confidence that working with the parents, plans will be created that will work to the expectation of the parents and the safety of the children. I have absolutely no concerns about how that tracks as well. I happen to work almost across the street from Fogel'sville Elementary School, the parking stores, and they have a very long intake drive, and there must be 30 or 40 cars a day stacked waiting to deliver their children. And it happens in a very safe fashion, and it is drive up, drop off, and leave, and I have every expectation that that will happen in Willow Lane. Thank you again for making the presentation.
Okay, and then the side, now the side?
Real quick, could you walk through the alternate extended walking path? If it, if I'm seeing this right, it would come...
Basically, what happens is, we're going to end, the existing walking path ends here.
Right.
You cross to get onto the sidewalks. We're going to take a look at whether we can get the grades to work, and of course, the budget to work, to extend that along this distance as well.
And where, would it connect to another?
Well, at least they're going to have to cross, you'd cross them at this point. But the difference, the difference in why that would be an improvement if we can make it work is, all the students are coming out of this end of the building. So what I can have is, if you're, if you're trying to get students onto this walking path, they're already on this side of the building and they operate. If you've got to bring the students up and around, it's not, not exactly how we, I mean, if I can, I can make it perfect, I'd like to get this in and do that. But we do have some psyche constraints that may not allow that to happen.
Okay. And the walking path that you want to just keep on the one side, from my understanding, I heard that that's not our property, but we, we have to maintain that?
Under your original agreements with the township and the fire department, we constructed this driveway, and we share access, we being the school district and township, share access on that driveway. I believe the school district maintains it, or is a joint made in some 100... I believe the school district maintains it or has a joint made, and it's not 100% sure now, and it's the same on the other driveways as well.
Okay. I think those are all my questions. I just want to make a few statements that I understand concerns, but this is put in place from what I'm conceptualizing is that the fire company's saying there's concerns if there would be any emergency. So, I think this is really good for the community in general to have that path open for the fire trucks to get out. And I think that once we start the new school year, the parents do have to kind of listen and abide by what the pop or drop off and pickups, because that is a safety issue, and they should really pay attention to the principal of the school. And I'm not an advocate for the 1.5 miles to walk, but it does drive me nutty that all, that there's so much influx of individuals picking up and dropping off their children when there is busing available. And I understand certain times and certain positions and doctor's appointments, et cetera. But that's one of my, I mean, I was a bus student all my life until I was able to drive. And my mom always told me that when I was sick, the bus would make me feel better. And I felt for it forever. So, I think that's my only comment. And I do reach out to parents to really think about if, to alleviate some traffic and the carbon footprint. If there is busing available, there are students to get in and through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyde. Mr. Rhodes?
Maybe this is for Dr. Seidenberger, and maybe we don't know exactly what the answer to this is. But with the newly-destructed walkway all on one side of the, of the entrance from Mill Creek Road, when they cross over to the school side of the road, how are we going to control that crossway right there?
We're going to have people posted there.
So, okay, so we'll have kids being there to help control the traffic, not just signage?
Yep. As opposed to crossing guards, they will be district employees.
Okay, I think that's important to have that one under as much control as humanly possible. I like the back of what Dr. Seidenberger said. If we do nothing, there's still going to be a problem with this school. As far as I can see, I'm positive about the plan as I see it right now. Could there be something better? There's always something better, but I think this is a step in the right direction and a piece of a puzzle we're trying to put together to make this the safest and yet a partially walking school. So, right now, I'm really positive about this, and thank you. Thank you for your work.
Ms. Rhodes?
All right, I would like to make some comments. I would like to point out that essentially, this is a project a little more than three years into the lifetime of the school. It's not unheard of to put something in and find out that it doesn't work exactly as you thought it should. And this looks to me like a plan to fix up a problem on the property that exists, whether or not we discuss any busing changes. This problem exists because the stack-up on the driveway, Mr. Suezak, still occurs right now, and that's a problem for the fire department, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, it doesn't matter. We would have to make this change almost without any other thought, no matter what we were doing with busing, because we have a problem. And remember that Lower McCounche Township is the one who specified the driveway configuration that we have now with their fire station. They could have opted to put in a separate driveway for their fire station and other things, but to save costs, it was done as a joint project. And so, now we have come to look at that and say, "Well, we need to make some changes." And in essence, if the fire station weren't there at all, there would be practically no interaction with Lower McCounche Township, because we control our property. And to within a certain extent of what we're doing, putting stripes, changing signage on the property, for example, would probably not even come under the purview of Lower McCounche Township, just that. And because we're paving and changing the plan a little bit, we're coming under their plan, but we're making an improvement to the property traffic flow that benefits both individual government agencies. So, I can see that going forth rather quickly because both parties are wanting it. The only thing that I will comment on is that to Mr. Bacher's point about other people reviewing it and so forth besides the government officials involved, is that no matter how much review is done, I don't believe that any answer that doesn't give what the people are looking for who are opposing this change will suffice. No matter what plan we would come up with, no matter what approach we would take, let me put it this way, if there's anything that would facilitate a change in our busing schedule right now, there would be total opposition to it. I don't think that is going out of bounds to say that. And so, I am not in the position to say that delay is worthwhile at this point, but that is up to the rule of the board, and we can tolerate a delay, so if it won't hurt us at all, I suppose that would be fine. But I, I don't think that a review is going to do a thing for any part of this project. And that would be my take on this subject.
Mr. Stoltz?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Well, I'm glad to see that we finally have... Ah, sorry, my usual spot. I'm glad to see that we finally have a concrete plan of sorts in place. Mr. Bacher, you actually kind of echoed my sentiments on perhaps there, we could get some input from the community and judging from the comment that Ms. Coonan made that Mr. Ballard didn't recognize, we may have aired somewhere possibly that will be able to let us know in the next couple of weeks if there's something that we missed in this plan that the parents could point out. But supporting this, and I, it sounds good, but I'm not a parent. I, I don't know. Supporting this before we get the recommendations from the parents, I appreciate that we're putting together a committee with Dr. Moore and so forth. Doing this before we get the recommendations from parents and from that committee doesn't really inspire a lot of confidence that their concerns are going to be taken seriously. It sounds like perhaps this committee is more to explain what we're planning on doing rather than ask the parents what we should do. I, I'm a little hesitant to see us do that. I was going to make a motion to table this, but perhaps there's a middle ground for when we go to the township. We could offer this as preliminary approval, but final approval to be subject to the recommendation of the Willow Lane Parental Committee and the upcoming presentation to Lower McCounche Township. I suppose I'll offer that as an amendment.
There is a proposed amendment on the floor. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second it.
Mr. Donches has seconded it? We're now discussing a different motion. Mr. Ursho?
Well, the reason we hire engineers and the reason we work with other government officials and their engineers is to get the professional opinion of engineers who do this for a living. Mr. Suezak, you've been our, our engineer of record, I guess, as the title of the school district for, before I came to the board, I don't know how long you've been working with us. It's been...
Since 93.
93, so 20 years. I, in all that, the time that I've been on the board, over 11 years, you've never steered us wrong. And I appreciate the quality of the engineering work that you've done for us and very much value your professional opinion. I would be very reluctant to put this up for a vote, a popular vote, for people to say, "You know, I just don't like it, and I'm going to vote no." You know, that's, there are, there's, there are issues that have been identified that we need to address in the physical facilities. We need to address them at some point, whether it's this meeting or the next meeting. I don't see that we would form a parent committee, have meetings, have discussion, have votes in two weeks. If we are going to try to turn over to some kind of a democratic system of government where the majority rules, the rights of the minorities tend to get trampled, which is why we are a Republican, operate under the rule of law. So, I, I'm not in favor of giving any group of people veto rights over the professional opinions of the people we hired to do so. That said, this plan that we've been presenting looks like it is an improvement to the physical structure. And the second step we have is to implement our guidelines and procedures for pickup and drop off for the students. And I believe the people who will be working on that, that Dr. Seidenberger will be primarily Dr. Moore and his staff, they'll be making recommendations and working with district professionals, is that correct?
In addition to Mr. Glancy and Dr. Mirabell.
All right, so they'll be working with everyone who meets, who has direct observational input on the situation, people who work with it day-to-day, and they'll have access to any kind of engineering help that we need as we implement that, I assume.
And Paul, certainly, there as a, as a consultant, if we...
I, I'm very comfortable with Dr. Moore's leadership. I've, I've known Dr. Moore for several years. I've never found him to be unreasonable or unresponsive. I'm sure he'll take every consideration into account. That said, there's probably no perfect plan on a site like this. There's probably no way to completely alleviate any kind of issues we might ever conceive of happening just because of the layout of the site. But I think this goes a long way towards giving the administration a facility that they can work with to implement an effective plan. And as to the, the comment that some parents don't obey the rules, well, yep, that's true of everybody. I must admit, I sometimes play a little fast and loose with the speed limit, as most of us probably do from time to time. I'm happy to say that my speeding has been judicious. By that, I mean I haven't gotten a speeding ticket. I guess injudicious speeding results in a ticket. But we're, we're going to have to do the best we can to work with the parents, remind them of what they're doing, having our staff on the site, stopping cars in the roadway for pedestrian crossing. I think these are all the proof measures that we've made. I'm comfortable we are going to handle it.
And I just want to remind them, we're, you know, we've, we've had those discussions multiple times. That's one of the reasons why we put the gates in, because the gates are going to prevent people from doing the wrong things. And gates are closed unless you really want to wreck your car, you're going to construct those. All right, we are talking about the amended motion. Mr. Bacher?
I'd like to clarify my comments, because I think both Mr. Ballard and Mr. Stoltz, Mr. Tucker, what I was saying, I'm not suggesting that we put decisions that we have to make to a public vote. They hired, they selected us to make these decisions. But I would say, and I, just the plan, when I look at the plan, I think it's a good plan, and I'm supportive of it. However, I'm concerned when the engineer says, "This is the way things happen now," and somebody says, "No, it's not." I fully agree, and I think I'm a little for her comments. I recall dropping my daughter off at Shoemaker. We had to cross the parking lot of the building. There were school employees there. I thought it was very safe. I don't see a problem with this once the rules are developed for what to pick up and drop off is. And that's certainly why I asked, "Is there any impact to the schedule for a length of two weeks?" To give people a chance to bring up these comments. And I, I fully expect to be able to make this decision in two weeks and, and not impact the schedule at all until we're, when we use those, I'd commission for approval. So, I'm not suggesting, and so with regard to Mr. Stoltz's amendment, I, I don't think that's the way to get things done in, in a deliberate, deliberate, deliberate body system.
Okay, we have a slight procedural problem that we need to work out. That is, if, for instance, we were to try to table this motion, it would be tabled currently as the motion Mr. Stoltz made. If we voted down Mr. Stoltz's motion, then there would be an opportunity to table the original motion. So, we have to approach this carefully as to which sequence we attempt to do. We could just table a motion and re-amend it or vote it down, but I'm not sure.
I'm here, you can vote up or down Mr. Stoltz's motion.
I know that part. That's, that's the easy part.
Then you simply revert back to the original motion that you...
Yes, I know that part.
Again, the one part don't you know.
Respectfully, I understand. The, the problem is, is that if we try to put a motion to table in right now, it tables Mr. Stoltz's motion.
That's if somebody moved to table Mr. Stoltz's motion, that nobody has yet.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to make sure we understand where we're, where we're going here. Mr. Stoltz?
I'll make one more comment, then you can vote down my motion. We'll go back to the original motion. We'll table it for two weeks. That's what we expect to happen. I'm used to this procedure by now. While I, I thank our learned and I'm sure very well-compensated engineers for their professionalism, the recommendations, and I trust the recommendations, I'm interested in the most concerned district professionals, we have our parents. I, I'd like to hear their input on this. They've been coming to these meetings, meeting after meeting, and I think we owe it to them to listen to them and see what they have to say. We don't have to abide by what their recommendation is, but let's hear what their recommendation is before we go forward. That's not necessarily democracy, that's simply listening to all concerned parties, particularly the most invested parties, the people who have children in the school who are going to be affected by this change. We're not giving the parents a veto, we're simply giving them a voice, and we can choose to either take or leave that. But that would involve not voting down this motion. So, I'm going to ask you all to not vote down this motion, but I don't expect you to follow through on it.
Mr. Ursho?
I may have misheard, but what I heard from the original motion from Mr. Stoltz was that it would require a parent's group approval. May I please have the amended motion so we know what we're voting on here?
Subject to the Willow Lane Parents Committee and Lower McCounche Township's approval is what it's...
I believe that's what I heard originally as well, that it was subject to their approval. Subject to the recommendation, which we can take or leave.
Well, which is a recommendation is what I said.
Well, subject to means it's improved. Well, I guess we just better just vote on the motion. I'll just remind everyone that democracy is not getting their way, democracy is having her say. So, I think everybody's had their say on this. We'll see what the situation turns out. Ms. Burtzel, will you call the roll, please, on the amended motion?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you just clarify if we're voting yes, we're going, would be amended, if we're voting no, we're going, can't be amended? Am I correct?
Canceling the amended, or not approving the amended motion reverts back to the original motion.
Okay.
Mr. Ursho?
Nay.
Mr. Rose?
No.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
No.
Mr. Paul Carron?
Aye.
Mr. Bacher?
No.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
No.
Mr. Ballard?
No.
Six nays and three ayes.
All right, we're back to the original motion. Now, Mr. Bacher, did you wish to make a motion to table?
Yes, I'll make a motion to table this until our next meeting.
Second.
At this point of order, motions to table, put it on the table. It's not for, they're there until voted to be removed. You, you don't...
You can't, you can't table to a date certain. And this won't...
Yes, I think that's the standard.
There's no discussion of a motion to table.
I'm just trying not to inform.
There's a motion to table.
I, the motion is to...
To a specific date.
To a certain date, not to lay on the table, but...
Okay, postpone, postpone.
Until the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Burtzel, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ursho?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
No.
Mr. Paul Carron?
Aye.
Mr. Bacher?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
No.
Mr. Ballard?
No.
Six ayes and three nays.
Are any motions tabled?
No. Postpone, postpone. Sorry.
Sorry. I'm going back to the old version of Robert's rules. All right, we've discussed item number five. Now the next item on the agenda is the report of the superintendent of schools, Tom Seidberg.
Want to thank you all for coming tonight. I would just ask the board if there's any more questions about our plans. Could you please make sure I get your concerns so that we can have them addressed for the next meeting. I'm going to continue with Willa Lane for just a couple moments, and then I have some other things that I've got to get around to by the end. I prepared a little handout for the board tonight, and there's a lot of things said back and forth. And I'm going to be kind tonight and say that I politely disagree with a lot of the comments that we've been hearing. And I just want to share with the board some important information. I think it's important that, sort of, we've got a little recapitulation of this issue from, let's say, last spring, early summer. I will say this for the record, this issue has consumed an extraordinary amount of administrative time, and for anyone to think that the district hasn't been acting is totally incorrect. We've spent many hours working on this. We've had many discussions with the township, both in meetings and conversations with Mr. Foselman and his staff, and I'm delighted with where we are at this point. A couple things. In our last meeting, it's very difficult for me to sit here and have talks about opening or trying to have kids walk without improvements being made. I mean, I think I'm going to stand on my record and say, at two specific points in time, we certainly didn't put kids at risk. And I will say this publicly tonight, maybe in some other information that's going on in the community. There's another governmental agency involved in this process. And Mr. Bacher, you asked me, what's the next step? Well, hopefully, I'm waiting, as you should be waiting, as everyone else should be waiting for the township to take action on their part of their responsibilities too. And one of the things that I'm concerned about as a superintendent is making sure that those improvements, when they are approved, and if they are approved by the township, will be done in time for our students. And so I will tell you tonight, I will not recommend any walkers walk unless the township's improvements are in place and applicable before the beginning of school. So let me just end that concern. That won't happen. Now, one of the things I'm concerned about is, and when we go March 14th, I'm certainly going to ask the township, what's your process? What are you going to go through, your approval? And I'm not saying anything tonight that I did for Mr. Foselman about it. I mean, I think it's, I'm going around the table and sensing that the board may be supportive of our plan. I would like to talk to Bruce and Warren, told it's a go, but however, when we do go on March 14th, I certainly want to go with an approval in hand to make certain that we're not playing a chess game with them. That's my concern. Okay, we're taking action. We're willing to expend dollars, and they're going to be expending a like amount of dollars. I do know that, and I've indicated to you in August that they have money to put aside in your budget. We don't know what the final tab is going to be for the crosswork, for the signs. We give you an estimate of crossing guards. So let me just talk about crossing guard for a moment. There was a comment made tonight, there are more than just two intersections at Little Crossing Guard. At least that was what was shared with us in multiple meetings with the township. Last time we met with them, we actually were delighted, and I think I've talked to Mrs. Conant privately, that there will be crossing guards placed at Willa Lane and Willa Lane, I think which should align. I think I told you that in some, if I'm correct, okay? So, again, that's evidence that we have been working, and we've been pleasantly surprised with the recommendations that the township. One of the things that I'm happy about is if this plan was stood, there would be two crossing guards at intersection of Will and Salacraft, and I think that's important. It has a little different than what we envisioned, but we're very happy with that. I also want to just focus on a couple things. Last week, there were some comments made about class size and about Willa Lane. Well, here's a little down and dirty report that I put together. Just to give you a latest, as of today, to give you an idea of where we are at elementary class size, this is an average in all our elementary schools, kindergarten through fifth grade. And I think when you look at it, we've got problems all over the district, and that's not a surprise. I've talked about that openly in the budget process. But here's the latest, and this is dated that, February 2nd data. Okay, we have enough going around? So I listed each school kindergarten, class size, average, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, yes. Some classes in Willa Lane and High, but if you look at the county, that's my number one concern at this point. And I think we've talked about that. And also, we remind some of our parents from Willa Lane that over the last three years, over the last two years, we've put an additional three teachers in that building. We have not put an additional three teachers in any other building in this district. So I think we've been more than responsive to enrollment, and I think this was not this past September, last September, we talked about getting 29 new students in about a three-week period, and our response was we put a new teacher in there. And I think we will continue to do that as we go through the busing, I'm sorry, through the budgeting process. The other thing I want to let people know is that Dr. Moore did put an update on his website, sent out a note, edging link, and so parents do have an idea. And again, we've created multiple documents, we're advising parents to go back and look at the walkability study. I know some people disagree with this, however, but that was a good study. It met and followed the criteria as laid out by Penn Dot, was a certified engineer to do that project. It was 11, one that he accomplished, his boss did over 100. We're just following the lead of Penn Dot. We thought bringing in an independent third party would have helped the situation, I think it did. A lot of the parents, some parents weren't happy with it, but so be it. But I think our plan was also specified in a walkability study. The other thing that I do want to remind, and I think some parents were lamenting last week about options, and as I mentioned, I want to reinforce again tonight, this district is really sensitive to parent concerns about supervision of their children. Number one, it has always been the case, and I'm proud to be part of a community that supports parents who work. Not every district does what we do in terms of transporting kids from daycare. So number one, parents have that option. And again, I want to emphasize, it's one of the reasons why we came to you with a partnership with Cambridge. And remember, when we opened Willa Lane, we sat down for six months ahead of time. Mrs. Campbell did an extraordinary job, working with all of our daycare providers to clean up transportation problems we had. We had daycare providers and district buses going all over the place. Now, we've realized that, we've saved some money, still not lessening services for parents. So that's an option. I want to remind parents and board members as well, that at Willa Lane, and just like every other elementary school, we do have before-school activities, or daycare, but childcare, and after-school activities as well. Yes, you have to pay a little bit for that, but that's still an option that parents have. And then parents can choose traditional busing or take their kid to school. So I like to think that these pens gives parents four options on how they should, how that we can help them with their children each and every day. So I just want to remind people, certainly I don't want to be confrontational, but I think there's a lot of misinformation floating around about what we do for parents in this process agenda. Also, good news, Mr. Moan has indicated that we now receive approval from Apple. Our apps will now be, people can go online and.
We are an authorized app developer.
We are an authorized Apple developer, so. And again, as I mentioned before, one of the things we really want to work with our real estate agents, and when we get our boundaries done, parents will be able to click on, see the boundaries of your school, see if you're going to walk, are you going to ride, and all that information. Again, when people are buying a home inside the district, they'll know, and we can answer those questions ahead of time. I want to commend Robert Bishop, he's a Maes High School junior, he's a finalist in the Penn State riding contest. He won a 70, he was selected from a pool of 75 students who'd be on the Penn State to compete, and we want to congratulate him. Also, it's my pleasure to announce that Isaiah Zikowski, how many of you remember him, he gave an impassioned comments during the book controversy. Isaiah is an outstanding senior. Isaiah would also grate your work with on our vignettes that we're about ready to put on our district website. He acted as the emcee in several of those vignettes, but we're so proud of him, he just won a local poetry out loud competition, which is a national recitation project. He will now be competing with other finalists in Governor Corbett's mansion on March 11th. So we're very excited about Isaiah. Also, in terms of some good news, we got a letter from Diane Ortiz of Lehigh Valley, she's the chair of Lehigh Valley Green Schools Committee. Willa Lane School, along with Brockle Middle School in Bethlehem and Nazareth Middle School, will be recognized in a green schools event in a local Lehigh Valley. When we get more information, we'll pass that along to you. At the same time, we received disappointing news from the State Department today, that they have chosen four schools statewide to be exemplars of green schools. Unfortunately, we did not make the top four. However, certainly want to congratulate Dr. Roy in Bethlehem for Brockle's choice, and certainly Mr. Rieker, superintendent at Nazareth, but also Dr. Leskey, who built Nazareth Middle School. So we're happy that our neighbors got selected as in Pennsylvania's first round for green I don't want to make too much of the bombs scare that we had the other day, but I do want to thank all of our first responders, especially Chief House and Officer Shaffer, and all of the district personnel that made certain that our school was safe for students on Friday. You have before you an agenda today about tech consortium. Basically, we're asking for your approval. This is no way, shape, or form, sliced Mr. Fisher. However, this is a pool of school districts. The cost between now and the end of school year will be $3,000, next year will be $9,000. It'll operate, those districts that opt in will pay then. If we have 10 schools above, it'll be $300 for the rest of the year. What this does, though, is provide in-service programs for our administrators about search and stages, about transmission of inappropriate videos, photographs. This will keep us in good stead with all the changes in the laws, and they are changing rapidly, regarding students and social media. And that's the only reason we will be involved in this legal pool. We'll be able to say, send administrators, instead of resending administrator paying $120 per session, we'll be able to say, send as many administrators as we want to workshops that will be held at DIU. So we're excited about it. Certainly want to thank Dr. Ryan and Mr. Cole for this work. Also, this is the same group of people that in-service, our superintendent's group, when we had our superintendents meetings back in November. One, as you're out and about and talking about the governor's budget, I do want to remind, you know, sometimes we hear about the governor's budget does this, and the governor's budget doesn't that. At this point, I do want to remind you that there is no reimbursements for charter school tuition. And so we rounded out the committee, community, and someone says, "Well, the governor did this." Yes, he may have done that, but here's what he did to. And it's reimbursed districts for up to 30% of our charter school costs, which this year we're estimating will be 3.5 million. Now, to be fair, the last time the state reimbursed this is about 23%. So, we're still out $823,000. So that's a big number. It's almost half a mil, the old way of calculating a mil. So I want to remind the board that when you're out and about, that's a good number to throw around. The other thing, and I don't want to give the board so much paper tonight that it will overwhelm you, but I will come back at the next board meeting. Mr. Frank was kind enough to do a calculation on what, there are some legislators who propose some funding changes for charter schools. I will walk you through those changes last year, but under the guise that this is just proposed legislation, but it looks like there's a positive impact to us. So I'll go over that with you at the next board meeting. And now, Mr. Ballard, with your approval, I'll ask, if the board has any questions about any options that we gave you about webcasting, Mr. Moan and Mr. Ritter are here to answer your questions, and we'll take it from there. So we gave you three options last week, and I'm happy that we gave you options. This is, we're giving you options with Willa Lane. I think it's always good to give board certain options. So there are the plans, there's three different solutions that we proposed that you can take a look at, and we'll be happy to answer any questions about any of the three solutions. Mr. Bacher, Mr. Moan, Mr. Ritter, and Mr. Ranses, you're awesome.
Just a question, the differences are two or three cameras. I sort of was thinking, you know, you might just have one, maybe not fixed camera, but one sort of set and forget camera. Seems like these options are for two or more cameras, and then required editing that will go along with that. Is there a reason why that's preferred versus sort of a camera farther back? I know we won't get to see all of our other faces in clear. But is there a reason why that option wasn't considered?
Well, I think what we were thinking about is that we have a camera, at least one camera on the board, and a camera of a person who's making a certification.
Oh, for the faces, where are they sitting?
Again, the price points for the scenarios are one company's price points giving an idea of approximate cost or materials to build a system. So you could certainly take scenario number one, if there's one camera.
And then possibly also edit costs. And then is this capture and post only, or is there streaming that could be done with this, or is it? I don't know enough about the technology to know, is it a neither or, or can you go or?
Well, the prices we worked on together were for different scenarios to capture the recordings of a meeting and edit them with multiple cameras, or if there's one camera, maybe turn the front and back, and post to the existing website. The second, or third scenario would be if you're going to stack or queue up multiple board meetings for going back and watching previous recordings, or just record one meeting, edit it, post it to the website when there's a new meeting, edit it for place that, like just do a month to month swap. So there's many different scenarios.
So these, in a vision, there would be one or more meetings would be posted to the district website.
Actually, if you look at scenario number four, it'd be multiple cameras that would record board meetings, and the meetings would be edited, and then we would post it to a server if the choice was to store those videos for maybe a year, two years, it'd be on when you go back and watch a year ago.
And I don't know how popular this would be, but if it is a district server that would be doing that, do we have to deal with, or is that what option four is? We need to get servers just for the.
Upon leaning further direction from the board, depending on what scenario we would gravitate towards and come back with multiple companies and multiple prices for it, if we record one video and push it to the existing web server is one thing. If we get into recording and storing and making many, many videos, we would purchase its own server, own self-video server for that, realize that we have one internet connection with this district, and anybody watching or streaming those videos would be on the same wavelength with students doing their work, and if they go on inside the district, it's one plate.
Even if we had dedicated hardware and still everyone can.
That is correct. We have one connection, I 21, they're an internet service provider, so they would be on the same highway, all the cars are on the same highway there.
Other questions regarding the, was a presentation of the material on webcasting? I have one. Have you any estimate from any source at all, or whatever, of what the. Uh, have you any estimate, uh, from any source at all, or whatever, of what the, uh, number of hits, uh, typical, uh, East Penn board meeting, uh, video might get?
I think we provided that, I think, uh, last time.
Could, uh, can estimate of how many people would actually watch a recorded board meeting?
Well, not how many would watch, but we've had some meetings recorded by another entity and put out there, and, uh, last time I checked, there were like two hundred and fifty-eight hits on a year.
I'll answer that, I don't know. Um, we were able to, uh, to look at that information and, um, January fourteenth, nine views, November twelfth, eight views, October eighth, thirteen views, September twenty-fourth, September, uh, not twenty-nine views, that was in the book controversy time. Same thing, September tenth, a hundred and three views, August twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth, August thirteen seventeen, July ninth thirteen, June twenty-fifth, eleven, and June eleventh twenty-three. That's the budget. So those are, those are numbers that we were able to take off another entity's website regarding, uh, potential use. Uh, I want to add that, uh, I had this in my, I had board meetings taped in my last district. It was a little different. Um, I had a person that was dedicated to doing that work. Fran Russell taught twenty-three classes at Burke High School, and then she was basically in charge of, of producing and repairing video. We shared a cable network stand station with, with the town in Brick, and we had so many hours of video. But that was almost like a full-time job for Fran. She came and she taped the board meetings, and we had regular cameras, and then she edited. Um, so it was a big operation. We talked to Parkland, uh, and I know Mr. Ballard, at one point you asked, yeah, we, we, we could go to the service electric, but I just don't know if we have the personnel at this per, point to do what Parkland's attempting to do. They have some people that are dedicated to that, and I think they're running into the same issue that I and Brick. Trying to find that many hours of television programming is not that easy. It's not that easy. Um, the other thing I can tell you, and I'm being upfront with you and honest, uh, before we had board meetings televised, our board meetings in Brick lasted about an hour and a half maybe. All of a sudden, um, our board meetings became prolonged. Um, and I think all this limited the fact that the board made the decision to take away our informational show. I had my own show basically once a month, and then the board decided that they wanted to, uh, show the, uh, the board meetings. And, uh, I know a lot of comments, because we have beautiful features like guidance, uh, the department giving recommendations and advice, parents, all that went by the wayside, uh, because the greater bulk of our time were then taken up, uh, by, by, uh, transmitting the board meetings. So it is what it is. Some people like that, uh, some people don't. I gave you statistics, what's going on in the state, what's going on throughout the state, and certainly, uh, we're here to work with the board no matter what your choice is, um, but those are some of the more salient issues regarding webcasting. Ms. Donches?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that the numbers for the other entity that's doing the broadcasting or the recording, those numbers are if you begin at the beginning of the meeting and watch it all the way to the end. So if somebody would, um, only watch a portion that they were interested or hop around a little bit, then that total is not recorded. So there could be, um, a little bit of that help as well.
Mr. Stolz?
Yes, um, I appreciate the work that the administration put in on this. It's something I've been working on for quite some time. Of course, we haven't approved anything yet, but have we considered the option, and I think this is almost what Mr. Bobber was saying, getting, you know, fairly standard video camera, recording the meetings, posting them on the website for a set amount of time, and then instead of archiving them on a server and taking up time from to a DVD and sort of what the borough does, make a copy if somebody wants it, wants to purchase it, something like that.
What, uh...
I'm sorry?
We're concerned about, uh, open public records act. We record a board meeting, um, I'm always thinking we have to archive those meetings.
I'm suggesting that you archive them on a DVD, which will cost you like two bucks.
Anybody else? Ms. Donches?
Yes, at the borough, they do them onto the DVD, and then if, uh, a citizen would like to purchase it, it's five dollars.
I'm not sure how that plays into the older renter's law. I'm not sure they've got a, um, number for DVD reproduction yet.
You do. You put in a right to know, at least in the borough, you submit a right to know and then...
I know how it works. It's the question that they also took, tell us how much we can charge per page, copies. I think there's some kind of, uh, re, requirement for them to develop a, uh, cost number for any reproduction to do. Um, other questions? Uh, Mr. Rhodes?
Uh, so, uh, are we gonna, are we gonna get back to us? Is this a possibility, just have a camera and do it, same with photo edit? Is there anything cheaper than what you're designing elsewhere?
I guess you have to choose the direction you would want to go, and if you would want to record and store and make available recorded board meetings online or go with a live camera that just broadcasts out live, is that what I'm hearing you ask?
No. No, uh, follow Mr. Stoltz's request, uh, we just set up a camera before the meeting, uh, put it on the website, and then after a certain period of time, burn it to DVD, have those available, uh, and then, you know, we could check to see if there's a, uh, any problem with that as far as approximately available to the meetings. Um, does, does that make sense to you, what I'm asking?
Well, I think part of the issue is, is the editing of content, a forty percent.
And what would the editing entail?
Well, someone would actually have to view the content and see if there's anything on that's objectionable to the, to the school board or to the...
And it's more to the student information, student faces, other things like that. It's one thing for a private entity to record a board meeting, uh, which they're not covered by some of the regulations like FERBA that we're covered by. So there's certain things that might not be permissible to be, uh, publicized. Senator? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rhodes.
Okay, uh, so the concern here is what we may get on here, not necessarily board meeting for people adjusting board, but something having to do with, uh, students in the school district is, is, Mr. Ballard, is that kind of what you're going with that?
Well, that's part of it, yes.
Well, it'd be, I'm just curious, what's it, I don't know what the full range...
I wonder if you can use your microphone, please?
I don't know what the full range is.
Thank you. Thank you.
What are the concerns? I'm just not first.
Well, we either have our technical team do it, or we can discuss...
I have a question, I'll let you ask. Are you asking what are the technical concerns? Are you asking what are the legal concerns?
No. What are the legal concerns?
That would probably be marks. You mean, for example, we had two probably lawyers, uh, addressing the board today.
One, one of the things, if we have students here, we have to make sure that they sign the permission forms to have.
Parents.
And I think we would have to go through and change all our forms to say, include videos as well, too. So, you know, you have, we give our awards, we have to make sure that every one of those, those students has that, that, uh, that permission form or file. Yeah. And there would also be potential, uh, liabilities if, for instance, uh, someone read a portion of a book at one time that they considered pornographic. If it truly was pornographic and the district was disseminating it, there might be a problem. Uh, individuals can do a lot of different things that the state entities cannot. Okay. Uh, that would be, are you done, Mr. Rhodes? Yes, for now, thank you. Uh, Mr. Stolz?
Um, is, is it being implied that we can, we can become a recognized app developer for Apple, but we're gonna have some problems editing videotapes or videos that we record?
Problems editing videotapes is not a problem. In the scenarios you see, the cost in DVD that's a personnel to operate to edit the videos, could a meeting be shot when nothing occurs, there's no editing, but turn the front and back? Correct. Could it, a meeting occur where there are many vignettes that need to be taken out and edited back together? Yes. If you go with one camera versus two, if you have two cameras, obviously you're editing back and forth, speaking at the podium, facing towards the boards, different scenarios. That's why, in all three scenarios, we have cost of the equipment, approximate cost for two cameras, low definition cameras, not high definition cameras, which is another choice, and personnel cost to be just figured out later depending on what would be the decision, how you go to build it.
I, I can't imagine that the cost of buying a fairly simple camera like that when burning the video to DVD, editing it, however many minutes, hours, whatever that takes, is going to equal anywhere near the cost that was implied in some of the recommendations, which again, I, I thank the administration for putting them together. I'm just trying to find a lower cost way of doing this. It, it seems like it would be doable with less than, you know, several thousand dollars a year.
Well, again, we gave you this information to you as a basis of the...
I understand.
On word lecture, you can find this, uh, if they're...
And these, these three scenarios also are SD or low definition cameras, they're not even high definition cameras, so this would be a professional grade installation for this room to get proper quality video camera handles and shot. If you reduce it and bring that down to whatever already occurs in the video air, time out like that, a camcorder setup or a, a webcam shooting it...
Yes.
On very low quality, that you would reduce that down, you would reduce quality, obviously.
I've, I've seen what the organization that currently webcast meetings does, and it strikes me as adequate, and if we want to, if the administration of the district would like more control over that, to make sure that we're not liable and stuff, and students are recorded. I, I, I think that us doing the same thing is not going to cost anywhere near what your recommendations are. And we fulfill the, shall we say, need that I've, um, I, I see for this. We kind of have to move into the twenty-first century here, start webcasting like a lot of other government entities in the area are doing.
Um, Dr. Seiburger, I was wondering if you could maybe reach out to another school district that does this? I know Easton does.
Easton Strange is live, and we're not recommending that.
Okay, is there another school district that we know of that is in the crowd that that's doing this, that could give us some recommendations? Because I really, I don't...
I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll check it out.
Okay, I don't have problems with the webcasting, I do have problems with the money going out. So if you could, wouldn't mind looking into it.
I'll, I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballard? Mr. Rhodes?
Uh, what about the idea of just recording the sound as opposed to video? Does that avoid any of the other problems we're talking about, like having students appear on the air, having to get release forms? Or would the verbal recording also incur that sort of, uh, paperwork?
I don't know, I'd have to research that.
Because ultimately what we do here is not what we, it's what we say, I mean, it's not so much what we look like. Thank God. And I know that if I was really interested, I mean, I've listened to government hearings, just listen to them, um, and I was like, listen to the radio. Um, I have to think that would be a little cheaper ultimately in the end, and, uh, it might serve our purpose. I don't know how the people feel, but I just think it's an idea to think about.
Ms. Horner?
Um, if, if I may express an opinion I had previously, uh, if anyone wants a full flavor of our meetings, our minutes, or exemplary, um, um, a, uh, a video, uh, might not well identify who is speaking. Um, absolutely, the minutes do, give the address of people, uh, give the full flavor of what is said. And, uh, I think that if anybody really wants to know what's happening in Easton, hold this great record to our board minutes page.
Thank you, Ms. Horner. Mr. John?
Uh, just to Mr. Rhodes' point, I think you're a handsome fellow, you have nothing to worry about in that department, but no, I mean, the question of, um, the question of audio, there, there are lots of different encoding formats. You can encode it as a WAV file. Those don't stream. So if you've got a three-hour board meeting, you've got this multi-hundred megabyte WAV file that you have to download in its entirety before you can start playing it. So if you, if you want something that can be streamed as audio, you've got different technologies you have to put in place. We might have to license audio streaming software. Every option we talk about entails a cost. It's, you know, whether we get a handheld video camera and hope that it picks up the sound effectively and then encode it, it doesn't encode itself, somebody has to sit down and start it. If there's an error, they have to re-import it, they have to, if there are students that are on there, we have to potentially check, as was said, whether we have a clearance, and if not, we have to edit that out. If someone stands at the pulpit and makes a claim about, uh, someone, someone's, an employee's health condition, we can't rebroadcast that potentially without being, uh, potentially violating HIPAA regulations. I mean, there, there are plenty of issues that we would potentially have to have a set of guidelines of what can and cannot be included, and anytime we say there's something we can't include, that means somebody has to sit down and do the editing. That takes time, it takes effort, and I suspect that we don't have district personnel sitting around wondering what they should do with a couple of hours that they have on a Tuesday morning or any other day. So potentially, we either have to hire additional staff, or we have to take work that they're doing and not do it today. So when we say it's cheap, yeah, it may be cheap, a couple hundred bucks to buy a webcam, but that doesn't mean it's cheap to broadcast our meetings. And I think we need to be well aware of those potential costs that we would incur, either in lost productivity from other options that they could be working on, as well as the potential issue of if this be, if this, we start recording them, I think you're right, Mr. Ballard, this then becomes a public record, subject to the rights no law. We probably have to have a retention policy, which means, you know, however many years we decide we're going to store it, we have to have server space to keep it, or, or we have to back it up to DVD and maintain those and hope those don't get corrupted. There, there are a lot of potential issues here, and to say, oh, it's just a few hundred bucks, I think is, is grossly underestimating the total cost of any kind of solution like this. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Uh, Mr. Bobber will go for you, is the, have you only spoken once?
Um, does it make sense? I, I'm hearing that there are some legal issues, and I guess he's got an opinion from the solicitor on this, I don't know if he's ready, I'm guessing he's not ready to do that on the spot, but, um, is that something that would be, um, that we would have to request a formal, um, what is that something?
No, it's not a formal request. I've had to talk to Mira Bola, Mrs. Chikari, and I have a conversation with Mr. Fisher, and we'll give you our honest opinion of what issues.
Okay, so that's one thing. I'm also getting the sense of the people that have spoke, um, that we would, I don't know that anyone's, um, looking for a multi-camera high definition, so probably you said you were looking for some direction. I think we would be looking at inexpensive, I, I, I do think if we go this route, it's good to have something installed and not a, a camcorder that someone has to be, has to set up every time and take down. Um, I would also look forward, um, again, consistent with legal aspects, if we could, um, I mean, the upfront costs are one thing, but the ongoing cost, if we have to do some editing, if there's something we could do quickly, easily, like you said, trimming the front and back, and I think that would be the direction I would be, um, wanting to proceed, to see a proposal on. I realize this isn't a proposal, this is some base, um, base information, um, because I think, I, I agree with, uh, uh, Mr. Earnshaw, that if we have to have someone spending a couple hours every board meeting, edit something, that's, I don't think we're getting value for that. However, if we can do some, if there's a way to do some simple ed, trimming the front, trimming the back, uh, I think that might be, uh, achievable, again, consistent with any legal requirements we need, uh, but that's fine. That's my opinion of direction. I, I realize there's only one person.
I need, I need to interject a couple of comments here, because I haven't spoken yet. First of all, I'll point out that there is a reason why broadcast stations have...
First of all, I'll point out that there is a reason why broadcast stations have a seven-second delay on both their audio and video feeds, and that's one of the considerations we have to take into account if we're talking about anything like streaming or anything near time. And the second thing I want to point out is, one thing you have not thought of in terms of the portable video cameras and et cetera, is that we have to tie into the audio system here in order to have people be able to hear what people are saying, for the most part, and we have it clear. So there is an audio connection that has to be made to whatever equipment we have to make. Is that Mr. Solz, did you get your hand up?
I did. I agree with the general direction that Mr. Barker is proposing. If ultimately it was the vote of the board to just go with audio, that would be a baby step in the right direction. In fact, I might suggest that we may have covered some of this ground when we started archiving the set pieces for board meetings, so revisit that information, see if that helps. Yeah, I'm not asking for any multi-direction, high-definition, I'd like to have webcast school board meetings, not an online horror movie, that someone various duly observed on patch, no one should turn on their computer first thing in the morning and see their face. That's the direction I'd like to go.
Any other comments? We'll have the Dr. Seidberger, you have one final one?
I think we have enough feedback that we can take the next step, and we'll certainly work with our solicitor to get some information. Also, I want to remind the board that tomorrow, going to a free, and I emphasize the word "free" workshop tomorrow, on First Amendment issues, so I will certainly talk to some of my colleagues who may be there tomorrow, see if they have expertise. And that's the other thing, Ms. Sid, we'll look at, find some of the districts that have had expertise. To answer your question, Mr. Barker, I can tell you that in Brick, it did not happen often, but every once in a while, this is Bristol, how to edit my board meetings, what's the misbehavior.
Ms. Donches?
And then piggybacking on to Ms. Hyde's request for checking with districts for what they're doing, might be able to try just to see what their policies are as well, which we'll get to that later.
If they're doing it, we'll ask for their policies as well.
Anything else?
I just have one last issue I want to cover, again, budget season is coming up, and since we are a labor-intensive organization, just got the survey from Pennsylvania School Board, so it's, I have the date on there, January 18th, 2013, and I think it's always good to take stock of where we match up statewide with employees, and I think the big number that the board needs to understand, I say this every year, but I think going forward, before we start the budget process, we are certainly not, as I would say, faculty and personnel. The state average is faculty members per pupil, the state average is 13.7, no, pupils per fan, pupils per, I have something. Excuse me. A little fire, a little old, a little fire. 13.7 East Penn is 15.6, and again, a lot of people want to suggest that maybe we have to make administrative, as I say, look at the data, for all districts, it's 162.5, here in East Penn, 251.2 students per faculty members. And I'm not going to go over the rest of the things, I think you will see that when we're compared to aid ratio and community type, we, again, are above average in number of staff per pupil.
Staff.
Staff.
Pupils per staff.
Pupils per staff.
In other words, we have fewer administrators and fewer faculty than the state average.
Than the state average.
Or districts of comparable size, or even...
Aid ratios.
Other aid ratios and other things.
And community factor.
Any further questions for Dr. Seidberger? Ms. Donches?
Yes, it seems so long ago, because the report was covering many items at the beginning, talking about the busing and options, something about options that parents had asked for, and I was just poking around, and I thought that we had been told that it's not possible to charge students to ride the bus.
That's correct. We called the State Department, when this issue came up last spring, I think a parent came up and read that offer last June, with the minutes, we called the State Department, in fact, Dr. Miller, Dr. Mirabella called the State Department, and we were told absolutely no.
Okay, because I was poking around, and I came across a school district, which is in Pennsylvania, it's called the Latrobe School District, and I'm not in any way saying that I think that we should do this, I'm just saying that there is, or it appears to be, and I don't know all the details, but I wanted to offer this, just, you know, the information, I'll give it to you, if you want to check out that school site.
We will call Latrobe. My school district, by the way.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Seidberger? We will go on to item 6.2 with the addendum. If I have a motion, please.
Second.
Any discussion of item 6.2? Nonappearing, Ms. Burson, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Pollard.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Baller.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
We have the carbon Lehigh interview unit, Ms. Fuller, would you like to introduce the podium?
Actually, Dr. Seidberger, we didn't have a job explaining what the agreement is in detail, so I would like to make a motion that we approve this agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Nonappearing, Ms. Burson, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Rhodes.
Ms. Donches, would you come up?
I think something I heard then that probably all of the school districts will come together, but each of us is being offered the opportunity to participate in all of this.
That's correct. Let me explain again. If, between now and the end of school year, fees $3,000, and we will get services, if all districts and Lehigh County agree, that's only, that's $300 worth, next year, the total cost is $9,000. And again, if eight districts want to divide 9,000 by eight, then that would be our fee.
And then the services that, this type of information and legal counsel that had been done in the past would have been either paid for by the IU or by the independent entities, by the school districts.
By the school districts themselves. Okay, so let's say I have a really weird case, my first call is going to be from Mr. Fisher, okay? And we rely on his information, but perhaps maybe he doesn't feel comfortable giving me a legal opinion at that point, and I, then hold me down when I call him for legal opinion. However, the big advantage for us, and I emphasize over and over again, is the in-service programs for our administrators. We, this is something that, if you're a secondary assistant principal, and that would be my priority, also Dr. Mirabella, and Dr. Pollard and Mrs. Campbell, who handle discipline on a regular basis, the attractive element is that we're going to get three workshops a year on these topics, and I see myself in that in these as well. So that's the real advantage, that we don't have to send down and pay for five or six people individually to go, it's just a group rate, so we're happy about that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Burson, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollard.
Aye.
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Baller.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, item number eight, we have two policies for the first readings, I understand Mr. Earnshaw submitted some language for correction. Does anyone else have any comments that they need to bring before the administration at this time on these policies? We will have another reading?
I sent some information also.
We have it. What we'll do, we'll take those suggestions and weave them in and produce those, they'll be part of the second reading.
Ms. Donches?
Yes, I just had a question on the definition of investment program, where it says specifically enumerated and would approve investment strategy, do we have one? How detailed is our investment strategy as a board? Do we put that together, or we assign that to the...
I think we can certainly reduce that to writing, but I think our investment strategy is very simplistic, since I'm in this district that we invest in those pure plied investments, pretty much it. We might have to pick out a CD here and there, but we're only voting on the, so we certainly...
So it's all sort of highlights?
We can reduce something to writing for you.
We do approve a motion every year for the investment vehicles, and that's, you know, put them in there, it's whatever we get.
So that's pretty much considered the policy, then?
Well, we will be happy to reduce that to writing.
Ms. Fuller?
In reviewing the policy, it really discusses US Treasury bills, return on obligations for federal government bank savings accounts, so I think, I think that the policy pretty well covers the kind of instruments that the board would give for citizens.
Ms. Barker?
Something that I didn't think about when I had the comments earlier.
The future microphone, will you please?
In the transportation contract, it talks about students living within prescribed limits. I know we sort of have the, currently we're operating, I guess I should say, my impression of our current policy is that we're busing people where we think it's safe, and, I'm sorry, where there are safety concerns, and where we will get reimbursed by the state.
That's our, that's our current procedures.
Okay. Is there a, where would the prescribed limits be? Is it intended to be in this document, or is it intended to be a...
Well, I think all policies should give the administration some, some of the legal blessing, and I think, we've talked about this topic, and I think you're going to be looking at that again in the near future. And I think if the board takes action and we memorialize that, much like when I came here, it was told that we all go to transport kids that live within 1.5 miles, that it's safe walking, and that's what we pretty much have been doing, but you might want to consider what I put on the table as an option. And then that would become our operational procedures from that point on.
Okay, and that would just be known, or you're talking about that?
Yeah. And what I would do is send out an administrator directive to first student, domesticancy, and base our, base our future bus participation based on whatever the board decides.
Another way of doing that is you can put an appendix onto the policy, where the appendix does not have to be reviewed with the same number of readings and so forth, you can just change the number like we change our ticket prices.
And that just requires simple board action?
Yes, simple board action.
Any other comments on the policies? Ms. Donches?
Back to the investments, I noticed in the references that the audit portion of this investment policy refers back to Board Policy 619, which is an audit policy, and within that policy, it notes that special audits by special interest groups are not allowed, and I was wondering whether a special interest group, or we've ever had a special interest group come and watch an audit.
No, not at all. I'm only here for five and a half years.
No, I mean, any citizen has the right to inspect records, an audit is a little bit more involved than just inspecting records, and it involves participation by the district, so that's why we don't allow it, because it would cost district money to have us, somebody just come up and say they want to audit our books. We are already audited officially by the state, by our own internal auditor, and by a federal auditor on federal programs, so we have the necessary Gatsby required financial audits already performed within the district, but somebody could theoretically claim that under the right-to-know law, they could audit our books, and that there's a difference between inspecting records and auditing.
Mr. Solz?
Just that triggered something, special audits and so forth, that wouldn't be covered under things like, I recall we had some sort of evaluation done of our financial efficiency by the Soros Group Center of American Progress.
They did that from their own inspection of our records.
I'm just, just making sure that's a different process.
Ms. Hyde?
I haven't sat through that much policy here, but I think LCGI has a policy introduced almost every month, and the way that they introduce any changes recommended is they will put it in red or bold, I'm just wondering why you do that. Okay, thank you.
At times we've had that, depends on what the policy is.
Okay.
How extensive it is.
I just have, I don't know your process.
Transportations, what a good thing, so we can change that thing.
Any other, Ms. Donches?
Well, thank you for investigating the investment policy.
Anything else?
Okay, we'll move on to legislative. Before we get on to the motion, I have two things I want to mention. First of all, the budget season is starting, and it's not clear at all whether or not the governor's proposal will even get past the front door of the legislature, so we cannot count on any of the numbers currently in the governor's budget on just about anything. And I would advise us all to understand that there are already comments out there that is dead on arrival, and so we, you know, that could be posturing, it might not be, but we have to understand that. In that regard, I have been asked by PSBA to testify in front of the Democratic Policy Committee meeting in Bethlehem on Wednesday, and I'll be reading testimony for PSBA at that time, and so that is something you should be aware of. As soon as I'm given the testimony for PSBA, I'll make copies available to all board members, it will be available on the PSBA website, I suspect shortly thereafter, but I am sandwiched in between the Pennsylvania Educational Association and the NAACP, and if anybody wants to attend the hearings, they're at Bethlehem's Town Center at 2:00 to 4:40 PM on Wednesday. Now, in regards to the resolution, I would like to introduce this resolution calling for reform of the charter and cyber charter school funding formula, as on Exhibit 9 of the agenda. Could I have a second, please?
Uh...
Are there questions on this resolution?
Ms. Donches?
I just, if you could, please, explain for me, for the public, what the double dip is, and maybe if you could, to use the East Penn School District and the charter William Arns, like how, how it happens.
Okay, well, the double dip occurs because the charter schools receive two payments for pensions. One is from the state for their, half of their pension costs, and the other part is included because we have to include the pension costs in our calculation of the formula that sends them money. So they get a portion of our pension costs transmitted to them from both the state and from the school district. They're not in our position where we're, we pay half of the cost of the pensions, and the state pays the other half, they're essentially getting double money from us to pay off their portion of the pension, because they get that included in the over $8,000 that we have to send for every charter's, regular education charter student. So the double dip has been estimated by the Auditor General as costing the state of Pennsylvania $130 million extra every year, and so that's where the double dip comes from. Mr. Barker?
Maybe the easier way to explain it is, we have to pay the full pension cost, and that full pension cost is included in the calculation for our tuition, cyber charter schools, even though we get reimbursed half of our costs. So we pay the charter schools a rate that includes full pension cost, so they get that money, and then they also get half of their costs reimbursed by the state, so they're getting two funding streams for the same gap up there. So we're paying half their cost included in our budget, and the state's paying half their pension cost as well, so in fact, that part of their pension payments, it can be twice.
That's the double dip. Any other questions? Nonappearing, Ms. Burson, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollard.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Baller.
Aye.
Eight ayes for me.
Thank you. Well, now, we'll move on to a report about the TIP committee by Dr. Barker.
Well, now moving on to a report about the TIP committee by Dr. Barker.
Um, we haven't had any meetings since our last school board meeting and committee meetings. Um, next meeting is Wednesday. I want to make a couple of comments. The, the minutes are available, the township said it was posted and I did verify that the, there are copies of minutes on the former Houdie Township's website. I've also received some info and questions from the public and I thought it would be good to let everyone hear what concerns were. I've answered some of the questions, but not all of them. And so I thought I'd just go through it. So there's a question that can the TIP plan limit the ability of the property owner to seek reassessment? I talked last time about a neighbor improvement district and that would limit the ability to appeal below the level needed to service the bond. But I'm not sure there are any other limitations can be included in the plan and I'll ask about that in the next meeting. There were some questions about what happens if the project doesn't work out? Is the, is the school district on the hook for paying the bonds back? And even if the project is not successful, the property owners are still responsible to pay, to pay their taxes. And considering the financial solvency of the major owners, it is unlikely that they would go bankrupt or something. But if for some reason they couldn't pay their taxes, there's still no financial liability to the school district. In the worst case, the bondholders are holding worthless bonds and so they're out of money if no one pays. Neither the district or the township or the county are responsible for any repayment of the. I had a question about why the district can't loan the developer the needed money and not use the TIP in effect being a loan, a loan. I don't know that there's any limitation to that, but I think the district would then have out of pocket expenses for coming up with the money. And then the district would, in that case, there was gone the risk of nonpayment. And so I think a lot of us would be led to go down that path.
Mr. Barker?
There's no legal authority for the school district to loan any private individual?
Well, that's another indicator. Okay, so there's no, so, okay. And then why the, why should the TIP fund be used for traffic improvements? The idea is developers are, have, have requirements for traffic improvements in general and why should other entities be paying them? Some of the details will come out in the final plan, but many of the improvements that are, are supposed to be covered by the TIP are improvements that address existing problems. And so, for example, I think the first meeting where the TIP plan was discussed here, there was a resident that spoke out about the existing problems on Everton Boulevard. Well, I don't know if it's Penda or the township, but the developers are being asked to remedy some of the existing problems with traffic. And the same thing goes with the detention basin, the stormwater detention basin. These are existing problems that the developer is asking to remedy. And so there's, that's in effect what the TIP law is, is, I think, created to, to affect some things that affect larger than just the developer and should the developer be a part of, pay all the costs. Of course, the devs are in the details and I think we need to, we'll be reviewing that when we review the TIP plan. And then there's also been some concern about why should the district be giving tax breaks to Costco and the other realtors? And I just want to reiterate that no companies get any tax breaks from the TIP plan. They all have to pay their full share of the property taxes and all the other taxes of their realtor. Tax breaks to any of the retailers involved in the company. And as I said last time, I'll be happy to stick around after the meeting to answer any questions or take any input. Anyone still around?
Do you now have any questions for Dr. Barker?
No, okay, we'll move on to business operations. Item number one is an informational item about opening requests for food service management as required by the state of Pennsylvania. That required us to offer bid for those. Items two and three on the, under the business operations, 11.2 and three, so I don't have any objection to combining them. Silver, have a second?
All right. Any questions? Ms. Donches?
I just wanted to mention on bill with approval, as you know, I've been asking for the detailed information and since I've got every seat, I'm going to abstain.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Burksell, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Abstain.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Paul O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Abstain.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Seven ayes to abstain.
Okay. I believe that item labeled four should actually be 12 because it has two, two other subsidiary items underneath it. We'll start out with what I'm going to call 12.1, the charge accounts motion, I believe, although we requested our solicitor to render an opinion on this and he will now render four.
In my opinion, it's considered a, in the nature of a motion to renew, without going through all the Robert's rules and my explanation, I think it's a valid motion.
So, okay, then we will have to have someone bring it forward.
I will make the motion.
Point of order, if I also had to apologize.
Who can make that motion?
Hang on a second. Let me add something. It's considered a motion to renew, it's not considered a motion to reconsider. Because it's considered a motion to renew, it actually can be made by any member here, not somebody who was, not somebody only in the prevailing party. Fact being said, that doesn't mean the board had, the board has, the board is welcome to debate the issue, the board is welcome to not debate the issue. It's distinct from a motion to reconsider because a motion to reconsider must be made in the same session. That was the case, it was the same session, then only a member of the prevailing side can bring the motion forward.
Could you explain how a motion to renew is different than a motion to reconsider?
Yes, there may, a motion to, I thought I just did, perhaps I wasn't clear. A motion to renew is a motion that is made in a different session. When a board meets more orderly or more often, you can bring the same motion back at the meeting following the subsequent meeting. In other words, two meetings ahead. A motion to reconsider is considered to be, be made by anybody. A motion to reconsider is considered to be a motion that is made in the same session. Having five monthly meetings, each of those are considered to be separate sessions. If it's a motion to reconsider, that can only be made by the party who is, can only be made by a member in the prevailing party. I want to look up at Robert's rules, it's in section 38. That's my call.
Mr. Ballard, I'm, I'm just going by this book here. Under nine, it says to withdraw or redo a motion. It says there is no motion to redo a motion. The main question cannot be renewed except by a motion to reconsider or taken and taken. So are you saying that this book is not accurate in this regard?
I went by Robert's rules of order. I, I know what you have there, I've consulted with that many times. I went to Robert's rules of order, which technically is the overriding authority here in the district. When I try, I took a look at that as well, just for informational purposes. I have a whole lot of knowledge in Robert's rules because they also then go on to define what is a new, what is a section, what is the difference between a new and a section? It's all been a lot of information. I use that as a guideline, as typical as well. That's my, that's my call. Again, that doesn't mean the board has to debate the issue because it means the board can't debate the issue. And of course, the chair has the overriding authority to say if this motion comes back again another time to consider it to be, what's the word? Dilatory, thank you, and therefore not entertaining. So I believe for one repeat, it will be a motion to renew. If there's subsequent attempts to renew this, it will be dilatory. So we will now have somebody make the motion.
I will make the motion.
Second.
All right, it's been made and seconded. We will now have the component of the motion, Ms. Donches, give her explanation.
Thank you. As you know, as I mentioned last week, we all have different levels of information that we need to do our fiduciary responsibility as a school board member. And I've been asking and I would like to have the detailed charge code on the check. And if nobody else wants it, I guess that's fine with me, that's your prerogative. However, I am requiring this in order to do my job. And we, you know, we really pride ourselves on technology here and having that NSBA education, I mean, from all over the country, people are going to come and view our technology. And it seems, I guess absurd almost, that we cannot put forward an Excel sheet or a report that connects the charge code number, which as we know from the budget book, is essential when a purchase order is submitted, and the check number. So whether it's exactly this report, what I'm looking for is that connection, the check number, the vendor, the description, the charge code, and the amount. And I would like to share with you two examples. The Phoenixville, Pennsylvania does this on their check request. They have it. So it's good to see another Pennsylvania school. And I also, and Dr. Seidenberger, you may know this, or the BRIC, Board of Education, includes their charge codes. And I was wondering if you were opposed to having it done like that when you worked at BRIC?
I haven't been there in five years, so I have no idea.
So this must be new?
Could be. In fact, I can tell you this, that when I was there, it's a different business manager that's there now. Mr. Edwards is a business manager I did not work with. So I have to check on that, see if that's, who's software, lots of, lots of things have happened in five and a half years.
Are you done, Ms. Donches?
No, I would, once again, just please ask that I am not micromanaging, I am overseeing, I am a detailed person, I'm interested in the essence and everything about the budget. For example, we spend over $3,700,000 on supplies. I would like to be able to look at the check summary list and say, supply, say, oh, that's where that is. I'm not saying that, now, don't, don't take it as micromanaging. I am truly interested in the whole essence of the details of the budget lines and the budget in order to make the best decisions when it comes to budget time and on the month to month fiduciary responsibility that I have. Thank you.
Okay, next. Mr. Barker?
Okay, I was considering, I think the motion is whether we would be adding this information to the bill list for approval. And as I said last time we discussed this, I find the English descriptions more helpful than the, than the account numbers. I actually took the, the last response, Ms. Donches got on the last, I guess it was two bill lists because it was all in, in one meeting, and looked up the numbers. You can look up the, the account numbers on the PD website. It's a pretty complicated process. And in the end, you can find what, you can find that it supports instructional, non-instructional, you can find it supplies, but you can find the, the fund it comes out of. But in essence, that information is already in English on the bill list. And so I would think, at least my looking at it, if you're questioning expenditure on the bill list, and this is actually why I'm looking at this, the expenditure for DNH photo, photo video. I don't really understand how having those six, five or six different account numbers helps you understand whether that's justified expense, knowing there's account orders, memory cards, supplies. And then if you're questioning that, where it's huge is, is the information I think you need to discuss to, to understand whether it's a legitimate expense to be approved, which of several budget line items it comes from. I don't, I don't really see the value in that personally. And so as far as the bill list, which we're discussing, my preference is to keep the English on there and not change to the account numbers because that would make it a lot more difficult for me to review the expenditures.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Mr. Earnshaw?
My understanding of this, the bill list, is that the business office takes all of the invoices that we receive from a particular vendor and lends them together into a single check. Is that correct? We receive multiple invoices over the period of a week or two. Generally speaking, that's what, that's what we do. And we do that to reduce the expense because we pay for every check we write, we pay for every check we mail as far as postage, we pay for staff time, we pay for time to reconcile the checking account and monitor that for being cleared. So I think that's a very good practice to whenever possible, reduce the number of checks we're paying. That means for any one of these line items, there could be many purchase orders associated with any given check. And those purchase orders could be covering, you know, one purchase order could be buying materials centrally that are then distributed to any number of schools within. So we could have one check with potentially dozens of specific numbers and the dollar amounts as they're allocated out. And then for us that don't desire to have that, we want to see that we're spending X number of dollars with vendor Y during this period, we wouldn't want to have to add up 5, 10, 20, 38, however many individual codes there are to see how much we're spending there. I think you get very quickly lost in the details. And then the other question is, I don't recall, I may be misremembering, but I don't recall on any occasions when this information has been provided to Ms. Donches where she's said, that's an unjustified expense and I'm going to vote against it. It may have happened, I just don't, don't recall it. So to say that she needs the information to do her fiduciary duty, it hasn't changed, to my recollection, any of the votes. Therefore, I don't think it's part of the, the process that needs to be done. I'd also note that if we did end up having those, you know, multiple line items for every check, this check summary would get many, many pages longer. We'd kill more trees and we'd have bigger things to download. I don't know, I think we've, in the past, we discussed this, the software that we use to manage the district financially is package software. And I believe the discussion we had before was there was no such report in the system. So we would either have to hire our provider to create a customer report or we would have to dedicate staff time in order to create this customer report, if that's even a possibility. So I, I think that for all those reasons, I, I disagree with this and I think it's unnecessary, unproductive, and a waste of the district's resources to provide that. Got everything?
Next. Mr. Stoltz?
I suspect that in addition to wanting to do her fiduciary responsibility, I can't presume to know Ms. Donches, Ms. Donches' exact reasons here, but she would like this information because that will help her better make decisions at budget time. And I know that we're going to have certain members of this board asking, Ms. Donches, woman up and provide specific cuts, if it's anything like last year, when she's asking to have a zero increase budget. So I think that we should authorize her to have the information she needs to do her duty to the taxpayers and to do her, do what she was elected to do. Frankly, I find it a little bit insulting that she even has to ask us. I, I know that the board president has a different opinion here, but she shouldn't need our permission to do this. She got permission when we, the people, elected her and put her into office.
Oh, you're, I'm going to sort that out, yes, wait, so. Before I give anybody a second shot on this, I don't believe Dr. Seidenberger has had a chance to state the administration's position on the expenses involved. Well, I'm not going to change our position that we offered the board in September. I think the same basic issues are at play here. First of all, I'm sitting here and let me...
First of all, I'm sitting here, and let me come back to BRIC. I have no idea what's going on in the state of New Jersey. I can tell you it's overly regulated. I wouldn't be surprised if the fault software demands are different. I do know that they've had a lot of budget changes in the last five years since I've left, so that could be, it could not be, I have no idea. But I do know one thing, being the superintendent of BRIC and being superintendent here, we have many more people working in the business office in BRIC. I can tell you that. Well, I think the big thing that concerns us is that I look at the role of board member, and, you know, our board policy talks about board members doing most of the legislative work and administration administering the district. Now, I for one am not afraid of monitoring. However, as we talked about last September, we do have an annual audit. The audit was just given to the board. There were no citations, no notes, no recommendations for changes with the way we handle our bill list. As part of the auditor's responsibilities, they will go in and look at our journal entries. That's what auditors do. If there were a problem, and Mr. Gorman and his staff felt that we were missed, what's the word I'm looking for, making mistakes in our accounting, I'd be the first one to tell the board that we ought to do something so that you can monitor our progress on the improvement plan. That's not the case here. Also, the AFR, which is the annual report we submit to the State Department, that is not given in the detail of Mrs. Donches' ones. I've said this in September, and I'll say it again, and you just saw in the report, we do not have a lot of people in this office to do extra work. If the board's pleasure is to do this, then I would argue, and I'm not kidding, that we will need at least another half a secretary to do this work, I'm sorry, administrative assistant to do this work. And that's about $20,000 per year. And if that's what the board wants, then my recommendation will be that we need additional help in the office. Plus, lots of times, we get bills and we have to go back in and change some of the entries. That's what's called a journal entry. So I don't know, is Mrs. Donches expecting all that work too? And again, I just don't understand why the level of detail isn't needed, especially when we have audit after audit, AFR, no comments from our auditors, no comments from the State Department. And I'm glad that Kenee School is doing this, that's great for them, but I think in September we produced seven school districts that are not doing this. And again, I want to remind the board that the way we're operating is the norm, we're accepted business practices and for handling bills on the bill list.
Thank you, Dr. Seidenberger. I think I would like to make some comments myself. The statement was made that each member has different levels of needs. So that's all well and good, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the individual members are entitled to satisfy those needs. When somebody says that's requiring it to do my job implies that they have a job that needs to be down at the level of detail of mulling every individual expenditure of the school district. And although the persons are elected to oversee the district, they are not elected to run the district. The district is run by the administration. We supervise the administration and we set policy. That's what we do, and we review things. And reviewing the checks, which is the money outgoing, is sufficient for all but some purposes, which I believe have nothing to do with any oversight position. It has to do with criticizing, as was implied by the statement about $3.7 billion on supplies, that $3.7 billion out of a $125 billion budget is less than 4%. And if any place is running with less than 4% of supplies for its basic operation, when it is basically a paper operation, I'd like to know where that is, because nobody else has been able to get their kind of similar operation down to numbers that would be significantly lower than 4%. So what we're talking about is somebody wanting to know where we're spending for paper clips and paper. And I just don't think that's the intended purpose of an elected board of school directors. If we have questions about the budget, we question our administrators, they inform us as to what's going on, and we decide whether we think the explanation is reasonable. We don't need to be down into the numbers trying to cross-check against what they've said, cross-check against the checks. We have auditors, both as I pointed out earlier, federal, state, and our own hired auditor, come in at least once a year in the cases of the federal, excuse me, the state, and the federal, I think, is every two years, on some basis like that. And they look for those very kinds of things that might be misappropriation of money from one account to another and other such things. I'd also like to point out that as a matter of law, if the request Mrs. Donches made came in under a right-to-know request, it would also be denied, because there is no report that is currently in that format provided by the school district to anyone. And we are not required by law to provide a report to anyone's personal specifications, no matter what their level of need is. So if somebody wants to inspect our records, they get to inspect the records we send to the state. They don't get to demand that we send them a spreadsheet in their particular order so that they can look for individual items that they might want to question, which require multiple hours of our staff trying to run down and trying to address every time somebody came up with one of these things. So it is incredible to me that we're having this motion come up again, and I assure you that if it comes up a third time, it will be dilatory, because we have hashed this out, we've said it. And I don't believe the rationale that's been advanced for this information. I believe there are other rationales out there that are not coming to public light, and I cannot support this motion in any way, manner, shape, or form, so I will be voting against it. And we'll have another round of comments. Ms. Donches?
Yes, thank you, everybody, for your opinions. To Mr. Barker's point that I have been asking on occasion for the larger amount, dollar amount, or whatever dollar amount it is for the specifics, to his point, I have not come back and said, you shouldn't have done this, or why did you spend that? I am purely getting insight and understanding about the items that are on here that are not clear to me for what they are being spent. As far as the auditor report, that's fine. I have no, you know, his audit does not give me insight into where the money is being spent. I don't understand why a half a person would be needed if there is a field that we have two descriptions of purchase, and rarely is the second column, which is mostly blank, ever used. So why the account code could not go into that column, obviously it's something to do with the software, I guess, but it seems like that should be a data point in a database that should be able to be called and put on this list. I don't intend to, as Mr. Barker alluded or implied, to be checking every account code to see if the team or wedge or moved to somewhere else. That's micromanaging. I understand that. That is not my intent. And I don't, this is for my personal information. I guess it wasn't implied that, like, the trust, you don't trust me with this information. What am I going to use it for? I am going to use it for understanding where our money goes. And I need the details to do that. And trust is a two-way street.
The question on the table is adding the account codes to the bill list. I don't think it has any, at this point, we're not talking about anything having to do with the budget and understanding the budget.
Well, it has to do with the budget, of course, because then...
Wait a minute, we have a point of order, Mr. Barker. Would you please explain what you think the point of order is?
The question we're supposed to be debating is whether to add the...
Account codes.
Account codes to the bill list. I don't understand, whatever we need to do to understand the budget is related to the budget. I think this is, and I understand that the bill list is to approve the spending of funds, approve the checks that we've made.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Donches?
We're getting off track on...
Could we just make it more directed toward the motion that's on the floor and leave things like trust and other subjects out for right now?
Now, you have brought up misappropriations and so forth, and that has nothing to do with adding the account code to this either. So I wanted to let you know that I am not mistrusting and that you're misappropriating monies to places that they don't belong. That's why I think of that. Well, I would very much like if the administration would add the account code to this blank space, this blank column on the funds accounting check summary. And that's...
Mr. Stoltz?
I think that the budget is very germane to this, from my understanding, because Donches needs this to help keep track of the budget and to understand where to make cuts come budget time. And certain members of this board ask her, woman up, and provide specific cuts. And I'm willing to give her any information that she needs to help make that happen. By the way, we're not talking about district policies, we're talking about PSBA policies which have been adopted by the district. It's one of the reasons that I so vociferously object to us continuing to spend taxpayer funds as part of the PSBA when they seem largely...
Mr. Stoltz, would you confine yourself to the motion, please?
Only if you will, if I stop it and stop literally casting aspersions on your fellow...
Mr. Stoltz, you are out of order.
You're the ones literally casting aspersions on your fellow board members by...
Mr. Stoltz, you are out of order.
I'll tear your motives, man up and specify them.
Mr. Stoltz, cease your stalking about things that are not in the motion. Do you have anything further on the...
I'm just stopping the motion.
Please continue.
All right. We all see where this is going, in my thought, right?
Are you finished, Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
Mr. Ernshaw?
Yeah, the comment was that the desire was to see where the district's funds are going. Well, we see that. Where they're going is to the vendors that are listed there. It's how it's accounted for is the question of the numbers and how it's applied to the budget, not where the money goes. I think we've heard plenty over two discussions. I move to end the debate.
Does it recede to that?
I second it.
We will now have a motion to end debate. All those in favor, say aye, and we'll end the debate if there's a two-thirds majority.
Aye.
But we have the...
I thought you were calling for a voice.
Ms. Ernshaw, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Ernshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
On the debate?
No. Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Pollock?
Name?
Mr. Barker?
No.
Mr. Stoltz?
No.
Ms. Hi?
Aye.
Mr. Bowden?
Aye.
Five ayes for you.
Debate has not ended. It's a two-thirds majority. We will continue. Who's next? Mr. Barker?
I just wanted to clear up some things to discuss, certainly anyone entitled to what they want to see, do their job better. But I think the point of this motion is whether or not any board member can convince the five other, four other board members to expend funds needed, that the expenditure of funds is worth the improvement. And I don't personally think that that threshold has been passed, and that's why I'm voting against, regardless of what people's motives are or not. I have not been convinced that the expenditures of funds to accomplish this is justified. And I would like to point out, when this was discussed before, and Ms. Ervoll was here, she was, to answer Miss Donches's question, she was referring to two separate reports. So the information is available, not in one report, not in one place. And so when there are a small number of items that someone wants to check, I think that's a relatively small amount of work for a staff person to say, okay, here are five things, I'll look them up on this other report to get them. But if we're talking about doing that for the whole bill list every meeting, I think that's a lot more work, and I don't see the value as far as, I just don't see the value for return of the staff time invested. So I'm going to give a negative answer to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Any other comments? One period, Ms. Ernshaw, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Hi? Mr. Ernshaw?
Name?
Mr. Rose?
No.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
No.
Mr. Pollock?
Aye.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Mr. Bowden?
No.
Six ayes, three ayes.
All right, now we have a motion about the insurance advisory council. Ms. Donches?
Yes. May I make a motion that we amend this motion as I...
Why don't you state it, and then we're going to say it, and then that'll automatically amend it. We don't have to have it conform to the letters appear if you make a different statement.
Okay. I'd just like to put it in alignment with a minute correction, that the solicitor provide a written opinion on whether the board or the taxpayers are owing to civil liability, since it appears the school district purchases insurance from members of the insurance advisory council.
Second. You want to do your reasons for the motion, Ms. Donches?
Yes. This is now, as I understand it, we are speaking about whether the solicitor will provide a written opinion, which as you mentioned, will off the district. Correct? That's why we're doing this. So would the same amount of money be spent on an oral opinion as a written opinion?
No. Because the district solicitor is here. If he is willing to make an oral statement about the situation, we don't pay the solicitor any more for that participation with the meeting. And so therefore, it doesn't cost the district any more than its fiscal presence here till 10:30 at night. So we don't run up any additional expenses. If, however, we request a written opinion, then he has to go back to his office, he has to have his rights grabbed, his secretary is supposed to gather, he has to vet it with somebody and then send it on to us. It costs more money than getting a request from the solicitor. So yes, it will cost the district more money to get a written opinion than it would be to get an oral opinion at the meeting.
Okay. What if it is a situation that I all mine up as our responsible for, and if there is something illegal, and I'm only posing the question, I'm not being accusatory, it would be better to have a written opinion as a legal defense than it would be to have a oral opinion?
I don't think a written opinion, and I'll have to let the solicitor talk about this, but I don't think a written opinion by our solicitor gives us any more protection than a oral opinion. It's just the solicitor's opinion. It may change whether or not we did it in bad faith or not, but it doesn't change anything about protecting us from lawsuits, though.
I agree with what he said, and if I were to give you one sentence that answers it, and if that one sentence is captured in the minutes here tonight, it's the same effect as if I put that one sentence in writing, packed in my office, and it's meeting.
But would a written opinion go more into, like, the case law or the support of and so forth? It would be more thorough than, would it not? so forth, it would be more thorough than, would it not?
Valid, all likelihood, it would be lengthier, in all likelihood, they get the same opinion if it's a oral or written, you got an alternate, alternate opinion is what you want, that's, that's the bottom line.
And then the, um, I guess the other reason I was thinking for the written opinion was should, depending on what your opinion would be, should the question be raised again, then the opinion has already been given?
As Mr. Fisher pointed out, if the opinion is in the minutes, it's there for the posterity.
So, um, if there were any... I guess the other thing would be, is the solicitor prepared to give a oral ruling on this particular issue?
I could do it right now if that's the little point, and, and put this to red, to rest, the answer is, the board, the answer is, long and short of it, the school district does not purchase the insurance from members of the insurance advisory council, nor does the school district appear to purchase insurance from members of the insurance advisory council. That's the bottom line.
So...
You're incorrect in your assumption, or I should say, that, that's not a, not a proper way to say it, you're incorrect in the belief that the school district either purchases or appears to have purchased insurance from members of the insurance advisory council. That's the bottom line, thing that you're going to get, whether it's a writing, all explanation to it, if I'm, if I'm, that's the move of the board, versus to, versus what I just orally stated, and it's not reflected in the minutes. Simple as that.
Because of that ruling, I think I would like a written opinion.
Well, then you're going to have to have your motion go forward.
No, I'd like to go forward with my motion. I have information that I believe, if you investigated it, perhaps, I don't know, but perhaps I would just like it, I would like a research, but yes, I would kind of think it would be very much...
I would suggest, Ms. Donches, if you have any information that would appear to be an impropriety under law, you take that to the proper public officials.
Make it simple, she believes she has information, it's something that's improper, that you should forward it to the administration, and you will share it with me. Uh, maybe that would be my suggestion to the chair, simple as that. I'm not, I didn't render this, I'm not making this oral opinion with absolutely no knowledge, it's absolutely not correct.
Okay, Mr. Stoltz, you were next?
Yes, I, I would...
Excuse me, point of order, pass the motion, is that good?
Yes. I was going to ask Ms. Donches if she wouldn't mind discussing the background, that's why she introduced this question first, but...
Right.
Um, Ms. Donches, do you have some information you want to share at this time?
I could. I just want, personally, to understand that the insurance advisory council, um, has representatives from two insurance companies and the gentleman, and I have confirmed that with him through email, it took me a while to get that information, but thank you, I did get it. Um, we all received an email about, in July, from a person who lives in the district and is also involved in insurance. I, um, I was sort of accustomed to Mr. Ballard replying to emails, so I didn't do anything for a while. And then, um, after about a month or so, I just followed up with a gentleman to see if anybody had followed up with him. And he had been in touch with Mr. Lancy about possibly presenting for business to the board, and was, was, um, referred to one of these gentlemen on the advisory board. And in his email to us, all of us, had said that he was told that if he even did get the business, and if his company did get the business, that they would have to pay the sperm, who is on the advisory council, a percentage of the commission. So that was raised a red flag, but that's really the reason I have brought it forward. Um, we know that when we write a check to, when we approve a check to, uh, one of these insurance companies, that there is a commission paid on that, to that company, at least, this is how it appears to me, and I'm not being accusatory, I'm just raising questions about what appears to me to be a red flag.
Ms. Hi?
Well, what I'm understanding from, uh, Ms. Donches, this sounds like, um, my husband and I do this with our car insurance, and actually with our house insurance, too, we have basically a consultant, I don't call him that, and what he does is he goes and shops for the best value for us, and he obviously receives a commission from the places that we tend to go with, we just recently went with Ally because it was the best insurance, and we left, um, another one, so, I, is that what I'm maybe understanding? Because that's kind of typical.
The, the history, and I don't know all the history, of, uh, this advisory committee is long, and we've been doing this, my understanding is almost forty years, uh, and we believed, I think we believed when we started, that this was a better way to do it. Normally, in my experience, what you have is one registered insurance agent, and that person gets all the commissions. What we had with the insurance advisory council was, we had multiple insurance agents who were all then sharing the same commission, so not one person would get the commission, so I had a handful of people that I could talk to about different insurance, different changes. So, we go through a, a process of the day, uh, we go out to insurance companies, we make it to a dozen companies this spring, to see who can give us the best deal in the different areas, property capital, the workers' compensation, um, we'll check a whole bunch of them, a lot of them will say, are you still with PSBA's insurance consortium? And we'll say, yes, and they'll say, we can't compete, we can't compete on service, we can't compete on coverage, and we can't compete on price, and we won't even give you a, a quote, but we still try to find other insurance companies, and that's what the two members of the insurance, uh, committee are doing for us, they're out there trying to shop insurance, trying to find out if there are people that are qualified to give us the insurance, and who's got the best price with the best comp, compensation, uh, and they share the commission, but we don't pay them, we pay the insurance company, the insurance company pays the commission to them.
Same, that's the way my insurance works, I definitely tip home a consultant, because I don't pay them.
Now, we could, we could go with a single, single agent who would collect all of the commission, so it would be the same process, except I only have one person to talk to to help guide me through and pick the best insurance policies for the district.
Right, whatever.
And actually, the gentleman was invited to join, and said that he was not willing to, to share his commission.
The email that we were seeing, he says that he was understood to join, um, but that he would have to pay a commission.
He would have to share it.
And he was told that the advisory council was closed.
Unless he agreed to share the commission.
It's word against word.
Oh, if, if I, I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
On the motion that's on the table, if the board wants me to put it in writing, I will, I'm aware of every single comment that's come from the board already, I didn't walk in here tonight without any knowledge, that would be a disservice to the board, so I'm already, I'm aware of all of this, uh, you want me to put it in writing, page extra, that's fine, I'm happy to do that, that's up to the little board, that, that's not my fault, whatever the board wants to do is fine, I'm already aware of all this, and I gave my oral comments, but, but, whose of all this knowledge? The little board.
So there is, we, they're with their, maybe, some of this knowledge appears to be a conflict of interest?
There is no conflict of interest, period. There is none, I'm satisfied.
The board's solicitor is satisfied that there is no conflict of interest?
Will be a put, if there's wish of the board to directly to put it in writing, I'll do it.
At this moment, we have a motion on the floor, unless it's withdrawn, Ms. Donches, are you withdrawing your motion?
No, I just, I think I'm fine.
Okay, anybody else who should comment? All right, Ms. Berdusel, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Rose?
No.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Nay.
Ms. Fuller?
No.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hi?
No.
Mr. Ballard?
No.
Six nays, three ayes.
All right, the next item on the agenda, I'm labeling as thirteen, Willow Lane Transportation Study Committee Resolution submitted by Mr. Stoltz. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Pollicano, all right, Mr. Stoltz, would you please explain your motion?
Sure, um, this is something that has been brought up periodically by members of the public, and I, uh, actually spoken with a member of the Bar and Heavy Township路灯 Commissioners, who is interested in putting together a joint committee with the school district to work on this particular issue, I've spoken with this in a long couple of occasions, uh, and they need to express this support and interest in doing this. I, again, I, I don't necessarily mind doing this long term, but I do want to make sure we do it right, and getting, uh, input from all, uh, interested parties, I think I've got pretty much everyone covered here, um, should cost the district anything, maybe a couple of, uh, volunteers, I'd be more than happy to serve on this committee, and I know there are parents here who would probably be more than interested in taking a part of this, um, I'm sure some of you will come up with some objections, and I'll be fascinated to hear them, and I'll respond as soon as I can.
That idea on the floor. Mr. Stoltz, next person, Ms. Spohler?
Well, um, as was, um, brought up during the, the presentation about the, uh, the improvements to the, uh, Willow Lane site, um, we are working on a timeline with school beginning in August, and I happened to be at that event where the Lower McCunche Township engineer was, and he expressed some concern to me that there's absolute willingness on the part of Lower McCunche Township to make the modifications necessary, um, for cross blocks, et cetera, but, um, they are waiting for us to make the move, before they make the move with the improvements. So it would seem to me, by, um, instituting a study committee at this date, now that the board has the, um, walkability study, has the transportation study, and has the information on the site change, site plan, it seems to me that, um, this could turn into an impediment of creating, um, safe outcomes for our children. Um, so therefore, I really think that, uh, as a board member, I have decisions that I need to make, that are in the interest of the district and the children and the parents, and so I really see this as a stalling tactic, I will not be voting for it.
Okay, Ms. Spohler, next. Ms. Donches?
Yes, um, I've been to some of those Lower McCunche meetings, and of course here, talked to some parents, and what I'm hearing basically is no one's taking the lead to have a dialogue with the parent, all at the same time, I think what we need is this committee just to come together, bring everyone together at the same time with a dialogue, that they can answer the questions, that, or ask the questions and get the answers. I think most of them, you know, feel like they've really come a long way, as far as the township has come away, we've come away, they've come, oh, not away from anything, they, they progressed, we progressed, they've progressed, Lower McCunche Township has progressed, I think all, this mainly is a committee, um, forming a representation of all the parties in the room at the same time, and it's so desperately needed on this issue.
Okay, anyone else? Um, Mr. Parker?
Um, I would say, and we've heard input that, that parents do want to have their, um, input on many transportation issues, heard, I've heard earlier, I, actually, we've heard in previous, um, uh, board meetings, uh, the administration was, um, willing to, interested in talking with the parents, and we've heard of an update, um, that they're doing another survey, uh, to form a committee, um, I think that needs to happen, and I'm encouraged to see that it's happening, um, I'm not sure how this is intended to jive with what's already happening with the district, um, so, uh, I'll ask, Mr. Stoltz, if you have any motion, how we envision this, uh, interfacing with the, the committee, talking with being formed.
Did I get the last part of that?
I'm asking Mr. Stoltz, uh, just how we envision this, what, um, what, you know, tell me, be, be...
I, I have a point of order, questions are to be addressed to the chair and not to other board members, so that's fine, it has to be to me, Mr. Stoltz, would you please explain what the outcome of this committee is supposed to be?
I think that Mr. Parker was actually asking this, how this committee would jive with what's already being put together, and how it would overlap, or not overlap, it's a...
And what, what's been determined by this committee versus the other?
Um, actually, this is just, I, I would like this to be part of the committee that's being formed, the only addition being a representative or representatives from the township, stakeholders from the board, anyone that the administration sees fit to, as a member of this committee. I, I want it to be part of the committee that's already being formed to, as Ms. Donches said, get all the concerned parties in the same room, it wouldn't be a stalling tactic because this is a committee that's all already being put together, provided that this, that the purpose of the committee being put together is not to, um, tell the parents what's going to happen, but rather ask them for their input on what's going to happen. And I, I have a very strong misgiving that this committee is going to be, uh, an attempt to tell parents what's going to happen rather than ask for their input, and we haven't, we've heard their input, but we haven't started a dialogue with them, we really need to do that, we ought to.
Now, Stoltz, does that answer your question, Mr. Parker?
What do you envision the outcome of this committee?
I, yeah, again, getting everybody in the same room at the same time, and getting input from everybody to a dialogue, that needs to happen before we go ahead with anything, and this isn't a stalling tactic because the committee's already going to be put together, provided that, of course, the purpose of the committee is to...
All right. The first round, any other board members, Mr. Earnshaw?
Oh, if I'm remembering correctly from the last board meeting, a survey was sent out to Willow Lane parents, unfortunately, some parents decided to use the same computer to answer the survey more than once, indicating they were from different developments, so the survey results were deemed invalid and thrown out, and one of the purposes of that survey was to solicit people who are interested in serving on the committee. We heard, I believe, today during the public comments section, that another survey went out today from Willow Lane, again, soliciting input, um, on the transportation issue, as well as asking for volunteers to serve on, on a, some kind of a parent group that would have discussions with Dr. Moyer and probably other members of the administration. We've heard over and over again that the messages and the concerns of the parents are being heard and factored into the plans. We've seen the plans evolve tremendously over the last several months as a result of that input. To, I, I, I'm not sure what, what the point of these scriptures are to so closely define this committee beyond what we're already soliciting from the parents who are affected to participate on it. It's not like every matter is going to be brought for a vote before the committee. And whatever the committee votes in the majority is going to dictate policy of the district. In every instance, if certain individuals on this committee suggest things that are, for whatever reason, aren't worth it, they're not going to become part of the plan. So I'm not sure what the point of this and of course saying that, you know, parents who are employees of the district, I guess the insinuation is that employees who happen to be parents of Willow Lane for some way can't be unbiased when it comes to the safety of their own children. I don't understand that. So I am curious about, about these scriptures. We see the plans going forward. I'm not sure what the point of this is at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. I believe Dr. Seidinger, you wanted to say something?
Well, at the risk of not being enamored with this agenda item, that's where I am. I don't know what this committee would do, number one. But I'm sitting here perplexed. Most committees have a charge. There's not an obvious, there's not a charge to this committee to do what? To assemble, to talk? Well, we talked tonight, here's a plan, so the next step is for the Board to take action. Once the Board takes action, we can now go to the township. We know internally what they're suggesting. I'm not a liberty to talk about it, okay? And if somebody wants to, I will invite this to pass, but if somebody wants to come here from the township next board meeting, they can tell the Board of Education what their plans are. So I just don't understand it. When we look at the issues, and we look at these issues from top to bottom, there are only a couple that are outstanding. If the Board goes ahead and improves our site improvement plan, that's a big, that's all. Now you have a plan. Now we have something to tell people about. Now, there are concerns about how Dr. Moyer is going to conduct traffic before school, conduct traffic after school. Well, he's sort of doing it now. Again, I want to remind everybody with all due respect, when we opened that school three years ago, I didn't have a committee. Tony didn't have a board committee, didn't have a parent committee. We sat down and worked out how he was going to bring kids into the school and let kids out of school. And that's an ongoing process. So I don't know why we would need a Board member or a member of the township to sit on a committee to hear Dr. Moyer work with parents about beginning and after school procedures. I think the only other concerns we looked at, we saw something about bad weather. Well, this Dr. Moyer deals with bad weather when bad weather happens. The only other thing that I see, and by the way, I didn't include in your packets the results from the first survey. I thought it was more than enough to give you those results even though we had concern about forty-four responses. Fifty-five percent of the parents said that they would be interested in a walking school bus. Now, there's no reason why Dr. Moyer can't work with the parents. And perhaps at some point, members of our administration help parents understand what a walking school bus is. We've never done it before, there are videos on it, I've looked at it. So I could see that Mr. Dr. Moyer would spend time with parents developing that. And that would be a commitment of time. But I see no reason why we need a formal committee to do that. And again, I looked at the current Board policy. The Board policy is very clear on forming these type of committees. Number one, there's two members. It's the Board President and the Superintendent serving as executive officials members. Then there's a whole cadre of instructions on how to form this committee, people with expertise. So I don't know what that means. And, but I'm overall concerned about do we have Board policy or don't we have Board policy? And then again, what's this committee going to do? What's the charge? I don't under, who's in charge, who's in charge of the committee? What's the charge? Am I in charge of the committee or someone else? Is a parent in charge? I mean, I agree, Mrs. Fuller, I see this spinning around wheels. We've probably heard from several people tonight, and I alluded to the fact that the next step is let's either vote up or down, site improvement plan. If we voted down, we voted down, we move on. Now we've taken action and I think the township, then the onus is on them to do that. What else? You can have someone come and talk about what, when the township hasn't taken action. I don't understand that. I really don't. Wouldn't it be better if we all heard what the township is planning? And someone sitting on the committee maybe speculating? I, I'm at a, I'm really at a loss to understand what this committee would do. I mean, I think there's lots of methodologies we can do to communicate with parents. But forming a committee, let's say, forming a committee, I just don't understand that at this point.
Okay. Let's see, I think Ms. Doncet, Fuller had one on the first round. I'm going to make a comment on this, Rose, you haven't had it.
Pardon me if I sound a little tired, I am. I think our charge, I, excuse me?
Mr. Stoltz, please. Mr. Rose, continue.
I think our focus now, what we really need to do is to get a, any feedback from the community about this site revision concept that we put off to the next meeting. We need to get this passed so we can move on. I think this has to be done regardless. When this is done, this may open other doors of information to us, so we'll have a better idea as to what's going to happen next. I think this particularly, the way this committee is put together, just kind of, for me firstly, muddies the waters and confuses the situation. We have two committees, are they together or they're not together? I think I would like to see this not be approved at this point. Let's move on with the charge that we have, see what the feedback on that is, vote on that at the next meeting and see where that takes us. I think at this point, we need to take steps forward. The community knows where to reach us, give us your feedback and let's see how this plays out. Thank you very much.
Anything to Mr. Rose? You can't watch out, I gotta get in here and then we'll have another round, okay? Anybody else who has spoken yet? Okay. I'd like to note a few things. I have structural and procedural problems with this particular motion. As Dr. Seidinger alluded to, we do have a policy on citizen advisory committees. This motion flies in the face of that. It entangles a committee for the school district with another political body. And although an individual commissioner may have said something that that does not represent Lower McCounche Township, unless they get a vote of three commissioners, I believe it is. So any, just like any school board member can talk about anything they want to and propose anything they want to unless they can get the additional votes to do something, they're just like any other citizen in this particular regard. So I don't understand why we would put a representative from the Lower McCounche Township Board of Supervisors Commissioners on a parent advisory committee for an elementary school. We've never done it before and I would see no reason to do it now because what we're trying to get is input from our parents about our plan, not input about Lower McCounche Township's plan. If that's properly done in Lower McCounche Township. The motion, as it's done, besides ignoring Policy 903, is a direct attempt to reduce administrative authority in the district. It's superimposing a board decision on something that, one, we've already said we were trying to form a committee. Two, tries to structure the committee, for some reason, as Mr. Earnshaw has noted, to eliminate any possible representation from parental employees who are parents and are just as entitled as anybody else to volunteer for the committee. And it's obviously, in my estimation, being sought because a number of people feel that if they can get this committee going, they can somehow reverse what they regard as an improper policy decision. They may deny that, but I think that is true. Point of order? Yes?
The, the state just put point of order. Yeah, I'm trying to think that the reasons why someone brings something to the Board, I don't believe are germane to the question on the table.
Maybe I'm stating my opinion. So for that reason, I will not support this motion. It's structurally defective and it is a presumptive slap in the face of our administrators and our employees. Next. Ms. Fuller?
Yeah, well, in his comments, Mr. Stoltz indicated that the committee mentioned here is an outburst, that the committee is being formed at the school. I support the efforts of Dr. Moyer to work with parents. I don't think we need a board resolution to have an administrator as fine as Dr. Moyer to do this job and work with parents. I look forward to hearing the results that they come up with and I have every confidence that they will be satisfactory results for the safety of our children. So understanding that I support the committee that Dr. Moyer is forming, I must vote against this study committee resolution.
Mr. Stoltz?
I should respond to the comments about quote scriptures on who can and cannot be a part of this committee. I actually never said that parents who are employees couldn't be members of this committee. We all noticed the language about shall be comprised of but not necessarily limited to. I simply specified that there should be parents on the committee who are not employees of the district as well. That way we get, we make sure that they're impartial. Or employees that are related to employees, that way we make sure that there are impartial people on the study committee. People who have a vested financial interest in the district might well be more inclined to go along with what the administration is suggesting. It's the fact of life and job preservation, I don't blame them. I, Tom, maybe I should ask you, how do you see the current committee that you've authorized being formed going? Maybe that will help bring some background.
I appreciate it. But this is a difficult situation. And I don't, how many times have I said it? And neither Paul alluded to the fact. Before we could bring this plan back to you, we had some kind of assurances from the township that we weren't going to get. Ambushed, what's we're looking for? Red tape to death, all that. So we sat down and had two specific meetings where our plans were reviewed. And the answer is yes, as Paul said, I don't think, I think everybody would agree, Paul's an honorable man. So the next step was to give you in our report what the costs were. Now, as you know, my practice isn't surprising to the Board. So last board meeting, Transportation Study, we put it out, there's like ninety-two thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. So we had an idea of what it's going to cost. Now we bring Paul to share with you what the plan is. Okay, the Board approves the plan, now Dr. Moyer can go to work. And again, we look at the issues put forth by parents at December tenth, at December third, at the meeting on November twenty-seventh. We now have reduced those issues to only three, in our humble opinion. Traffic before school, traffic after school, what's Dr. Moyer going to do in bad weather? And we would add, add to the mention of, is there any interest in going forward with a walking school bus? All those things are germane to the operation of Willow Lane. And I would suggest that Tony is one of the most engaging principals that we have, had a great, has a great track worker of working with principals. And I think you can note, Tony Moyer, he's not going to go into a room and tell parents. He's genuine. Again, we will have expertise. If parents want to question a little bit more about, about how this is going to work, with Dr. Baravello, Mr. Glancy, we can make Paul Suezak available to that parent group. Now, once, and I've said this in person, I've said this, once the township takes action, then I can see us having a press conference or I could go to a township meeting, who says people can come here and we can have a full airing out of what the total plan is. But I don't control what those folks are going to do. Do I know what they're going to do? I have an idea, much like you have an idea. But I'm not a liberty to say that, that's not, you understand that. I mean, and I'm not going to, I think one of the more unfortunate things about this whole issue is that it got played out in the press a little bit. So people going on wild goose chases. Well, did they build this school for walkability? That was a ridiculous waste of time when everybody in the world knows this was a walking school. And that's the kind of thing that upsets me. That got everybody's eye off the ball for a needless period of time and everybody's running around, who said what? Who said this? It was a ridiculous, ridiculous chase to know where, like, for some reason, well, the Board's trying to pull the wool over eyes by saying we didn't develop a walking school. Why, that is gracious. Those people here knew that. So that's what I'm concerned about, that we don't waste time. Okay, we have a plan out here. Parents want to give a comment, they can get in touch with me. Dr. Moyer will gladly bring it, they can stand up to podium next board meeting and give you their feelings and then vote up or down and then move on. And I see no reason. Now, the next thing, in terms of sequence. People, I'm surprised no one's asking you, when are you going to put on the table your recommendation? Well, I need a little bit of a path to understand that. I've already said, I presented two options to the Board. I did that last year. I need a little more information. When's the township going to vote on their changes? Once I have all the facts before me, then I will put a recommendation on the table well in advance of the budget. I've already said tonight, if something goes wrong with the township that not finished, we'll buss it through. So there's a resolution. And I know that was a concern of parents, so that issue's over. So what I don't have at my disposal is what's the township's timeline and what exactly are they going to do? And then, if somebody doesn't like what the township is proposing, then the argument is with the township, not with the committee here where I have no power. And neither would my administrative team or would any Board member from this Board. So that's, I'm just trying to put these things in, in the context. So only if they want to work with the committee, they'll work on those issues that are germane to Willow Lane and we'll move on.
Yeah, I want to point out that there's a bunch of plans to be put out in a bunch of cities. But remember, the plan that we're talking about voting on next meeting has only to do with rearranging traffic on the site, which would probably be required no matter what the busing decision was. Okay, so understand that. That has nothing to do with the busing decision. It has to do with simply rearranging traffic on the site. Any more comments?
I believe I technically still have the floor.
Well, go ahead, just get the floor now.
That, this won't take long. I think that someone there wasn't answering my question, so thank you. Mr. Solicitor, it was pointed out that this vote flies in the face of, of PSBA, sorry. Does that matter? In your learned opinion, does that matter?
Learned it. There is a Board Policy 907 that talks about how to create citizen advisory committees, just to be a citizen advisory committee. I've always had a disagreement with the Chair that policy is the direction that the district stands. We're doing these policies that wants to change that and it's always been my opinion.
I just wanted to have that on my agenda. At this point, so it doesn't get voted down and I can reintroduce this at a later date if necessary, depending on how this parental advisory committee goes. I'm going to withdraw my motion also at eleven oh five at night, as we pointed out.
Is that acceptable to the secondary?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
So at a later date, I may bring this up.
Motion has been withdrawn, we saw recorded in minutes, if you wish to bring it up again, submit it, you know, the usual, as you did with this motion, submit it for the normal procedure to get on the agenda. Is there any new business to come forth, boards? Ms. Hyde?
Sorry to do this to you, Mr. Rose, but I'm not going to be making the LCTI meeting, so I was wondering if you could take the notice and present it to the next board meeting?
I'd be happy to, Ms. White.
Thank you, sorry for dinner and engagement at work. And if anyone wants to go to my place, I have the agenda working.
Excellent opportunity to find out about that board and how it operates, you get dinner, you know, free dinner, so please consider backing up the side of Mr. Rose by taking the side's information. Anything else? Announcements, prior to this meeting, we had an executive session at four thirty and an executive session at seven PM discussing personnel, negotiations.
Yeah, four thirty was personnel.
Four thirty's personnel.
The meeting was to discuss personnel.
Personnel.
Confidentiality.
Confidentiality and real estate.
Real estate and negotiation.
And negotiations. The next board meeting will be on March eleventh at seven thirty PM in the boardroom. I'll now entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm going to go.
All those, I, I will take this vote, okay?